Everyone, welcome to the Board of Selectmen, Highway Commissioners, Cemetery Commissioner, Joint Meeting with the Finance Appropriation and Advisory Committee meeting of Thursday, September 26, 2024. For the record, this meeting is being recorded. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, limited and just a law.
Without objection, the Chair of the Board of Selectmen will facilitate item three on the agenda with the understanding that the FAA Chair will chair the FAA Committee concurrently, including any allowable discussions, questions, business or motions requested or required under item three.
No objection, Mr. Chairman.
Want to officially open up, or you all set?
We could. All right, I'll call the FAA meeting to order at 6:35.
First up on the agenda, citizens' comments. Anybody wishing to be heard tonight on an issue not on the agenda, not requiring a vote of the Board at this time, please come forward. Seeing none. FAA Chair calls the Committee to order what you have done. Continue the hearing from Monday, September 23, 2024, the public meeting of October 21, 2024, special town meeting warrant under section 3B, number one, citizens' petitions review. I'm going to defer to the Town Administrator before we defer to Council. If the Administrator has anything you want to add.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. We received two citizen petitions that were duly certified on Monday for inclusion into the October 21 special town meeting warrant. And as part of our review, we review all articles. We have the petitioners here tonight, I believe, and the petitions themselves, and Town Council to offer his opinion publicly relative and ask and answer any questions that he may have, or the public may have, the Boards may have, relative to the petitions. And it's our Labor Counsel, Mark Terry.
So without objection, I don't think Mark needs any introduction, but to those of you that don't know Mark, Attorney Mark Terry has been Town Labor Counsel for a better part of 20 years, I would imagine.
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five. Mark and I go way back. I'm going to turn it over to Attorney Mark Terry. When the questions time comes, folks, if not many people here, I don't want a repeat of the DEP hearing, I don't think we will. If you come up, you feel the need to speak, please address the attorney as counselor or Mr. who had the first stories and what we had last time. Thank you, everyone. Mark Terry.
All right, thank you. Good evening. So a pleasure to be here, and I was given a copy of the two citizens' petitions, one relating to the Town Administrator bylaw and the other one relating to the personnel bylaw. And I gave a lot of thought to sort of how best to address those two petitions. And I will try to segregate my thoughts a little bit, but quite effectively the comments, because the themes tie together, may overlap or be a little repetitive, but I'll do my best to cut to the chase on it. So as I reviewed the citizen petitions, obviously, my first responsibility to the town is to identify any legal concerns, legal issues embedded in those proposals. Obviously, there's not much sense in pursuing things that don't withstand legal challenge. The other thing I wanted to offer, and I will briefly at the end, are some comments about sort of the nature of trends, right? To the extent that these two documents are purporting to change the form of government to some degree within the town of Dudley, I want to share with you sort of where the trends have been over the last 25 years. And then some practical concerns that I've identified in just reviewing the documents. But I want to be real clear that my comments are being offered from the role of Labor Counsel. They're not being offered with thought to sort of who's in current roles or people. Quite frankly, although I know you from all working with you, I don't know the people, I don't know the motivations. I'm just reading documents. And so I will say to you that I do have concerns about these two proposed petitions. And I think the place to start is sort of with the basic premise that by bylaw, no municipality can adopt something that's inconsistent with state law. So when we talk about the legal concerns that I have, we start with that premise. And I think it's helpful to think about what the personnel bylaw in particular says. And it focuses on the ability to adopt certain plans, compensation plans, classification plans, and some others. And I'm just going to read a very short quote from one of the few decisions in the courts. And one of the things I will say, it's always hard in interpreting these, is there's very little case law to interpret the statutes. So what I'm going to be offering to you tonight is my best understanding from analysis, basic principles of law, things that we've seen raised as concerns through prior work with the Attorney General's Office and the like. But the quote that I want to read to you comes from a case from 1966. And it says, "The power given to the town," it was the town, I'm quoting, the town, but obviously not Dudley, "in Chapter 41, Sections 108A and C." And so for context, 108C is the statute that allows for the formation of a personnel board. 108A talks about the creation of classification and compensation plans. And then also in Chapter 40, Section 21A, which I'll get into in a minute, but it's a fairly narrow principle. So the basic power given to a town is, what they said, is plenary and basic, complete and basic. And the scheme of these statutes is for the plan, or a plan, that has sort of general applicability in all departments other than the school department, which is specifically excerpted by the law, and that establishes mutually consistent rates and plans of compensation. In its provision, meaning 108C, "a personnel board or other agency established for the purpose of administering said plans or other provisions of its bylaws pertaining to personnel determining questions arising thereunder, and advising the town in any matters pertaining thereto." And that last clause, I think, is really important, right? Because it's talking about initially plans, compensation plans. When I bring in Section 21A that I referenced, that talks about benefits, holiday, sick leave, vacation. Those are the examples. So together, what these statutes are really saying is, look, you can have a personnel bylaw that addresses these plans, but that's really the narrow scope of it. That's what a personnel bylaw is supposed to be. Now, I will tell you that I think there are plenty of bylaws out there that go beyond that. And because personnel bylaws as a general proposition aren't subject to the review of the Attorney General's Office, there are probably a lot of them out there that have stuff in it that doesn't legally belong there. But this is the scope of it, right? We're supposed to be looking at administering plans around compensation and paid benefits. That's really what the statutes allow for. And that's important in this discussion, because certainly at a bare minimum, even if it's contained in a personnel bylaw, ultimately, if it has provisions that go beyond the scope of what the law allows, they're still subject to the review of the Attorney General's Office, even if we label them personnel bylaw, okay? And so the concerns, like I said, is that really legally, we're supposed to be looking at things that administer, interpret, and advise. They don't establish policy. They're not supposed to do that. There's a policymaking authority within the Board of Selectmen, right? That's probably one of the things everybody knows, right? The Board of Selectmen is a policymaking body for the town. And to the extent that there is a provision in the proposed amendment that talks about establishment of policies, that's starting to intrude upon the authority of the Board of Selectmen as a policymaking body. So that is one of the concerns that I have with respect to the sort of initial structure here, because that's inconsistent, right? Legally, the Board is a policy-setting body, but we're trying to intrude upon that. That's where, to come back to that core point, bylaws can't be inconsistent with the law. Another place where that occurs is that the Board of Selectmen is the contracting authority for a number of employment agreements by statute. So we have general laws, Chapter 71, Section 108O, N, and a half, which authorize the Board of Selectmen to be the contracting authority with particular individuals, Town Administrator, Town Accountant, Police Chief, Fire Chief. There are other authorities, like the Board of Library Trustees does the contract, I think, with the Library Director. So it's important to recognize that that authority exists, and we can't by bylaw intrude upon that, right? Generally speaking, if you want to change really the legal structure of the authority of different bodies within a town, that has to be done either by a special act or a home rule charter, right? And I know at this point, the town does not have a charter. But just doing that by bylaw is going to be inconsistent with law. So one of the things that is contained, I think, within the personnel bylaw specifically, is it has a final and binding process related to the authority, all the authority that the Personnel Board has in this proposal, which in essence would allow the Personnel Board to adopt certain rules that restrict all the authority that we're already talking about, right? They're intruding upon, or, and I should say, it's not explicit, it's just created by the structure that's being proposed. You can adopt rules that interfere with the authority of the Board of Selectmen to hire, right? Because you have to get the approval of the Board of Selectmen, I'm sorry, excuse me, the Personnel Board, under one of these proposals, to appoint somebody. That's intruding upon your decision-making authority. Same thing with the approval of contracts. Their structure here is the Personnel Board really is the gatekeeper, right? It doesn't get to the Select Board, Board of Selectmen, until you get past that. So that's where I see some of the legal issues, right? Is that these bylaws effectively intrude upon the authority of the Board of Selectmen. There are a couple of the provisions that I will just highlight that are either minor issues, like typographical, that are in here. Simple reference, Chapter 105E is really 150E, it refers to the collective bargaining statute. There is some lack of clarity in my mind about the meaning of Section 74-5C. And then there's some sort of circular language around the title of Town Administrator versus Personal Administrator versus Human Resource Manager, places where the Town Administrator is being asked to submit a report, I'm sorry, the Human Resource Manager is defined as a Town Administrator, but then is told to submit a report annually back to the Town Administrator. So it's in a loop there. Obviously, that's something that can be corrected, but it's just something on the flag for you. And ultimately, you know, the shift in control here for procedures is, you know, something from the purview of the TA and consultation with the Personnel Board, to the Personnel Board really having authority to establish a process. And that exceeds, that appears to exceed the bounds of what is permissible for a personnel bylaw. So that's sort of starting with the personnel bylaw. Some of the things that overlap with that, of course, in the TA bylaw, is we talk about, again, the issue of contracts. So both the Personnel Board and the FAA would have the ability to approve compensation in terms of negotiation of the contract with the Town Administrator. And again, the authority to negotiate that contract by statute, Section 108N, is with the Board of Selectmen. So to have another board kind of say, "No, you can't," is at least changing the fundamental structure of the statute, right? Because now it's almost saying, "The Board and the Personnel Board, together, do that." So I think there are also concerns that I would have about the language in there that seeks, and I think it's not a bad idea, to establish qualifications for the position Town Administrator. There's a section about you must have a certain number of years' experience and education. Those aren't bad concepts. But again, they're intruding upon the authority of the Board of Selectmen's appointing authority. As an appointing authority, you can hire whoever you want. If you want to establish those kinds of rules, again, special act, home rule charter, those are provisions that will prevail over existing provisions of the law. And you can't, like I said, you can't do that by having a bylaw in place. So I've talked about the review and approval of appointments, I think, but generally, there's a broad provision here that talks about really any appointment that's going to be recommended by the Town Administrator goes through the Personnel Board and then again to the Board of Selectmen. So that intrudes, again, on your authority. The other thing I'd highlight for this, to the extent you're talking about a bylaw, which again is supposed to be a plan that applies to everybody, you have multiple appointing authorities in your town government, right? You have a Board of Health that appoints, you have a Water Sewer Commission that appoints, and probably some others that I'm not thinking of. So this document is proposing to have sort of one mechanism, the Town Administrator bylaw, that is different than what would happen with all other appointing authorities for the Board of Selectmen. Your appointments have to go through the Town Administrator on his recommendation, and then through the Personnel Board, but a Board of Health just votes, right? Or Water Sewer Commission just votes. And so there's an inconsistency, I think, with the concept of having sort of broad consistency with those ideas. There's also a role on the other half of the appointing authority is the idea of removal, right? So there's provisions here to talk about if you want to remove. There's a recommendation from the TA to the Board of Selectmen and the Personnel Board. Again, the Board of Selectmen's the appointing authority. That includes the ability to hire, fire. And so to have somebody else who's kind of could stand in the way, and presumably, the language is a little vague on this, but presumably say, "No, we don't agree," and that having meaning is reducing the authority of the elected Board of Selectmen. So, you know, there's some other things, again, there are kind of the practicalities in this. The restriction says sort of no changes on a TA agreement, which I'm not sure what that was intended to do. But if I just read the plain language, it would suggest to me that once you have a Town Administrator contract, that's the exact same contract, that it must exist over time, and literally could be interpreted as no pay increase from year to year. That obviously is problematic. You're never going to be able to retain somebody or find somebody new with those kind of restrictions. I'd also point out to you that, again, the Town Administrator Contract Statute, Section 108N, has a provision that says where there's a conflict between a bylaw, excuse me, and the terms of the contract, the contract prevails. So in some respects, some of these things may just be, you're putting words on a piece of paper that you're just going to run around a different way. That doesn't make a lot of sense to me. I will say the probationary period language, conceptually, is fine. I think what's written here is incredibly narrow, quite frankly. Usually probationary period is just broad brush, you're not happy, you remove somebody. This one's actually confined to just performance issues. And so I think that actually is not in the town's best interest. Then I also recommend against specificity of sort of the removal process, there's something there already, but the process that's being put in place if we wanted to remove the TA is actually more extensive, more time-consuming, involves probably more council involvement, based on my experience knowing these kind of provisions. It's not uncommon to have the structure in place, there's nothing wrong with the structure. I think that's problematic potentially in terms of the Board's authority, but even setting that aside, I'd be cautious about that provision. But that's less of the concern. Like I said, my biggest concern with this is the erosion of the authority of the Board of Selectmen in a way that's, I think, inconsistent with law. So then, those are kind of the legal issues, and I'll just highlight those, of course. The trend thing, I think, is really important here, too. And again, when I'm talking about trends, when I'm talking about trends, I'm talking about the way municipal government has evolved over time. I mean, there was a time when there'd be three selectmen sitting around a table, you know, in a farmhouse, you know, in the 1700s, right? The statutes still read the same, but things have changed, right? The world's developed in a different way. And I certainly would say to you, over the last 30, 40 years, going back further, but more frequent, there has been a very strong trend towards having professional management, right? So you're talking about centralizing decision-making, you're talking about having a Town Administrator that in a lot of places is the true appointing authority. Here, you know, the current language is sort of talks about recommendations, talks a little bit about appointing authority. But, you know, those are professional positions, people who've gone and gotten formal education. And that certainly is a trend. And I think one of the things you see, I'll bring back the Collins Report, which I'm sure you're all familiar with, but may not recall, one of the specific recommendations in there is about dissolution of, I guess it was called the Personnel Committee before, dissolution of that, not having citizens involved in sort of what would become or might involve day-to-day operation personnel matters, and centralizing your HR function and personnel issues. You've relied historically on wage consultants, who are professional people that know how to go out and look at statistical data. Here, you're talking about bringing back more citizen involvement. And I'm not, certainly not against citizen involvement in their government, but there are some elements of what HR involves that are highly technical, a lot of legal compliance. And what, what HR involves that are highly technical, a lot of legal compliance, and you don't know who's going to be on that board. And not having people who truly have the same experience and responsibility that typically a town administrator and assistant town administrator or the like, an HR director, would have, I would suggest to you in the long term, presents a liability to the town because the decision-making isn't necessarily the same, right? And it's not, and I'm not pointing to anybody in particular, but I've seen enough of this where there are still personnel boards involved and it's hard to make decisions that are in the best interest of the town as a government because people are friends with the person who's involved, you know, the, the employees who live in town, and, and what it does ultimately feed is a culture often of favoritism, sometimes nepotism, politicalization, you know, protection by boards that is contrary to really having the best employees in your, in your operation across the board. So, you know, I, I will say this to you, I, and, you know, I thought about the time, you mentioned before, twenty, twenty-five years that I've been with you, and I was practicing a few years before that, I can't think of one personnel bylaw that I've worked with that purports to have as much authority within the Personnel Board as these, as these rules do, and in particular with the involvement in contracting and appointment and discipline. So what I'm saying to you in that is, even when I started doing this twenty-eight years ago, this was not something that you, I would expect to see anywhere, right? The trend has moved way past that, and so this, in my view, moves way backwards, backwards to a point from, you know, prior to, at least twenty-eight years ago, and probably more than that. The last thing that I just mentioned to you is, the last set of things, the sort of practical things, because you have different appointing authorities within the town structure, you have inconsistency of process, and I mentioned that point before. There's, I think, a real pragmatic concern about if Personnel Board is going to be involved in any kind of discipline or policy, like, you need to develop a quorum, right? You have to have the quorum for that to meet, and sometimes things need to move faster than that, you know, quite frankly. Decisions cannot always wait until we can get a group of, you know, whatever, this is going to be a three or five or seven-member board, to get a quorum together to figure out what to do. I think particularly when you're talking about disciplinary issues, leave issues, confidentiality is huge, right? There's a legal obligation to maintain those confidentially, and necessarily involving more people just increases the risk of that leaking out. Again, I, I don't know who's going to be here, so I don't, don't take that as an accusation towards anybody because I don't know who it'll be, but I would have those concerns, and I've certainly seen that play out. I would say that I've certainly seen circumstances where Personnel Boards take a very narrow view of the issue, right? They're looking at question of holidays, I'll give one example. A few years ago, the state passed a law that made Juneteenth a holiday, right? So every municipality needs to be closed, and their offices need to be closed. And we had a place where we were doing collective bargaining and negotiated over, well, we're giving them additional paid day, this particular client said, look, we've given you so much paid time, we need to say, we'll give you the paid day because the state requires it, but we want to get concessions somewhere else, less sick time, less personal. When you have a Personnel Board that doesn't necessarily go along with and doesn't follow the same thought process, it creates morale issues when they go a different direction than what you've done through collective bargaining, right? And so there, the Personnel Board made a decision like, no, we're fine, we'll just leave the personal, personal days another time the way it is and give the holiday. And that created a huge backlash, even now it's been three or four years. Every time, every time I go to the bargaining table there, that's a problem, like, well, we, we had to give this day and they didn't. And I think there's always the risk of that when you have a different decision-maker rather than a coordinated process. I would say the other thing to think about practically speaking is, you know, how many employees would these new bylaws really impact, right? How many employees would be covered by a revised personnel system? And when you think about that, you have to think about, I think, some of the things that are in here that I would suggest to you are potentially increasing the politicalization or it might appear that way. Hopefully, it never plays out that way, but may appear that way to employees, might cause them to unionize. You also have a significant number of employees, I've mentioned some already, that are entitled to negotiate an employment agreement, your town accountant, your town administrator, your police chief, your fire chief. When you pull those people away, you really have very, very few employees that could actually be covered by this document, by the personnel bylaw. And, you know, I don't know how the, the unionization, if that's going to be a thing or not a thing, maybe this is not a concern to your employees at all, but, you know, I think as you think about whether you want to go through the process of pursuing these petitions, and I, I realize they're citizens' petitions, so you, you may have to, but if these are going to be pursued, understand that there are very, very narrow set of positions that may actually be covered by this. And again, we still have the issue of multiple appointing authorities and, and how this plays So the, the other thing I'd just point out, as a sort of minor point, is I, I thought it was a little odd that there was a proposal that, so it says currently, a member of the Board of Selectmen, FAA, and if you're a moderator, can't be on the Personnel Board, but there's a provision that's added that says, except if you can't find enough people, then one of you, I think the chair serves. And I think you got to go one way or the other on that, right? I mean, otherwise it just gets potentially manipulated into, well, we can't find anybody, we really look hard, and now, you know, Mr. Sullivan, you're, you're sitting as the representative there. So, you know, I think the, like I said, I mentioned before, the, the concern about politicalization, nepotism, you know, that's not to say that, like, I've seen that happen with a strong town administrator before, but it's far more likely to occur as a structural issue when you're bringing citizens in to manage or, or be involved in the personnel process. And I think the last thought I'd, I'd like to leave you with before you turn to questions, whatever, however we're going to move forward, is at the core of it, the proposal really takes the Personnel Board and elevates its responsibility. As I've suggested to you, I think it intrudes upon the authority of the Board of Selectmen significantly. Obviously, it shifts the balance and, and the nature of the relationship between the TA and the Personnel Board. But a Personnel Board being appointed and having the authority that it's being given in these two documents ultimately is taking the authority away from an elected board, right? The people voted to elect this board and every board every year, and choose you to represent it and handle many of the things that are within your authority, all the things that are within your authority, and replacing that, that concept, replacing the concept of allowing the people to elect people and to have them execute their responsibilities with what becomes an appointed board, which can be any group of people that may have expertise or not have expertise in a certain area, I think is something that, that the, the town, quite frankly, as a whole, really needs to think about because it has, I think, the potential to significantly undercut the, the, the value of the vote and the, the role that the citizens have given you now. If they choose that, that's, that's certainly their prerogative, and maybe that's what the people want, here's your lawyer, not as, as your politician or, or a member of the community. But I offer you that as a thought because I think in this day and age, there really is a very strong emphasis, generally speaking, on my vote counts, regardless of what level you're talking about, and, and if I elected somebody, I want them to do that work, rather than having some other board come in and sort of take over that authority. So again, you know, I think, just wrapping up, I think there are, you know, there are certainly a number of legal issues that are at least of concern, you know, and red, raise red flags and may not pass muster. I can't promise you what the AG's office is going to do with that, but I think there are a lot of things that are here that are concerning, and, you know, it certainly would suggest if there's a, an appetite for sort of taking some of this content out and, and avoiding those conflicts, I think that's, that's wise. I've also offered you some thoughts on where the trends are, which is really, again, towards a strong management, having a town administrator, town manager, HR director type of folks that have specific knowledge, expertise, training, all of that, and having that, you know, be your, your core person who's working on all the HR issues, and then, you know, the number of practical considerations that, you know, are just observations from twenty-five years of doing this, twenty-eight years of doing this. So I'll stop there, I hope I didn't go on for, forever and a day, and, you know, I'm happy to take questions or, or address concerns.
So I just have one before I open up to the rest of the board. Every time you mentioned conflict or potential conflict between what that bylaws set out to be, you're referring to Select Board statutory authority.
Correct.
It's not just a small town like Dudley, that this board's got that.
Yeah, these are, these are provisions of the general laws, chap, particular chapter forty-one, sections one oh eight N is, is one of the primary ones, that's the one that gives you the authority to negotiate a contract with the town administrator. There are other provisions within chapter forty-one that talk about the authority to appoint employees, and so the general premises in a town that's organized like Dudley, the Board of Selectmen appoints everybody for whom there's not some other method of appointment. So that typically includes all your police, I think under your current structure, actually, I'm sorry, the fire chief, I think is the appointing authority, I didn't mention that. Police, I believe, are under the, the, the Board of Selectmen, certainly all your clerical, your highway employees, those are all folks that are appointed by the Board of Selectmen, even if it's on a recommendation from town administrator, that's typically the way, that, that's the way the statutory framework is, and that's what I'm speaking about.
I'll open up to the board before the public. Mr. Shane, do you have any questions?
No, I don't think so, not right now.
Want to come back, okay?
Yeah.
Just a second, image.
Thank you. It says here, the board shall, members of the, shall be appointed by the Board of Selectmen, Moderator, Finance Commissioner.
I'm not sure what you're looking at, if you don't mind.
I'm sorry.
You said, says here, I'm not sure what you're looking at.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm on, yeah, I was a little distracted there, I apologize. First page of the petition.
TA or the Personnel Board?
Personnel Board.
Seventy-four, three, Carrie.
Seven, four, three, thank you.
Thank you.
Shall be appointed by the Board of Selectmen, the Moderator, and the Finance and Appropriation Advisory Committee. Is that an obligation for those people to appoint people? Do they have to do that?
It is within their area of responsibility to appoint members. There are certainly times when people aren't interested, and I've seen this, quite frankly, with a lot of Personnel Boards around the Commonwealth, people don't want to do that. I, I don't think you have an obligation to appoint somebody you found that wasn't qualified. And you certainly, if nobody's interested, then you default into the fallback provisions that are in here, if you, if this is what's adopted. But you can't, you can't undercut an authority, right? I mean, the, the bylaw is telling you, we're supposed to have a, a committee or a board, and this is how people are appointed. So, you know, you, I would suggest that it would be problematic to sort of intentionally not fill positions to make sure there was never a quorum. I don't know if that answers your question, but...
Well, I, that was two parts.
Okay.
The second part is, have you ever seen a Personnel Board that was elected? And could that piece possibly be changed to say elected?
I don't think I have seen that. If, again, that, that would be something that I believe would be a change in structure. I believe they're all subject to the appointment, I'd have to look at that piece, Carrie, in particular, but assuming the general laws say it's an appointed body, however appointed, if you wanted to change that to elected, you would almost certainly be looking at special legislation or home rule charter to accomplish that.
That was my question.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chief. Mr. Landry.
Yes, Mr. Chair, thank you. Attorney Terry, I just have a, a question about trends, because I was looking at that and the history as well, and knowing across the state, a lot of cities and towns do want to move upward and forward and not the reverse, and if they do have, some of them, Personnel Boards, it's to assist a department, not to, like you said, establish. So you covered the trends, the establishment, and the variances, the Collins Report, where the town used up two grants, HR and salary study, and that was very clear on that, and you really did a good job uncovering everything I was going to ask, so thank you.
Yeah, the one thing I'll just, it was in the initial statutory, or the, the case reference that I read, which comes from the statute, but I'll emphasize again, the last part of section one oh eight C, the Personnel Board law, talks about the responsibility of advising the town in any matters pertaining thereto. So it's an advisory role, and where Personnel Boards still exist, that's typically what they are, is there's a process driven by some professional employee, some direction from a Board of Selectmen to develop, let's say, we're going to have a, let's say, we want to change our holiday policy, or we want to look at our vacation policy. That's developed typically by the town administrator or designee of that person, and then presented to a Personnel Board saying, this is what we're looking to do, what's your feedback? You know, how do you react to this? And some of them even do have representation from employees that are not unionized, right? Because those are the people impacted, and I've seen that. It's got its own warts to it, but, but it's, that, that's the process that is most common, and I think that's consistent with the statute where it talks about the role of advising. That's what it is not doing, but advising. And I think that's, that's where the, the citizens' petitions go the other direction, which is too much of establishment, too much control, and, and getting between, again, the person, the, the Board of Selectmen predominantly and its statutory authority.
So that would, looking at that, and if it was going to go the other way, be established and intrude on the authority of the Board of Selectmen, for lack of a better term, it'd be more of a, of a power grab or viewed as one?
Well, I won't, I won't comment on the politic, the political nature of it, but it certainly is, is, it is adding more power to the Personnel Board than it has had here ever, as far as I know, and I did go back and look at the, the law, the bylaw that had been here way back, and some of the language, I will say, is similar, and I, I didn't say this in my original comments, but there's, there's some language in there that I think probably just stayed there because of how it was practically used, but also has language like establishment of policies that probably was never appropriate before, but never, to my knowledge, was really exercised in the way that, you know, now you look at it with a, a fresh light and, and sort of fresh set of eyes on it, looks a little different potentially, but, yeah.
Mr. Johnson.
Nothing at this time, thank you.
Mr. Ruder, any questions?
No.
Chairman May I?
Questions for the lawyer? No question.
I'll open up to the public.
Mr. Chair. Sorry.
You ready?
Yeah.
All right, sorry.
No, it just took me a little bit.
It's okay.
So, looking at the personnel bylaw, section, sorry, seventy-four, four, E, the Board shall administer a final binding problem-solving system by which town employees may present themselves grievances. Have you seen this language employed in other Personnel Boards, and how does that work on the ground?
Yeah, so there, there are places where this is in place, and I don't think that language in and of itself is problematic, it's more about how it ties into the beginning of this provision, right? So if you look at seventy-four, four, the revised paragraph A, where it talks about should be responsible for the establishment, ongoing updates to personnel policies, procedures, et cetera, and a lot of that's leave, but then it gets into evaluations, transfers, corrective actions, employment-related practices, and really gets into the handbook, right? If you look at the handbook, it's got all sorts of stuff in it that goes way beyond compensation and benefits, and that's appropriate, but it's not appropriate really for a Personnel Board to get into. So the, the real problem I have with this binding problem resolution is how it ties into things that are beyond scope of the Personnel Board. So I'll give you an example, and I have seen this as problematic elsewhere. If you were going through a termination proceeding, the proposal is that town administrator would make a recommendation to the Personnel Board and the Board of Selectmen. It's not clear to me, sort of, votes and whether you need sort of two keys to make a decision there, but setting that aside, right, for now, if the argument is, well, the termination decision wasn't proper, right? Now you have a Personnel Board that has a final binding problem resolution system that arguably would allow it to hear a grievance related to a termination decision, and then itself decide finally what the outcome of that should be, which is a complete and clear interference with the Board of Selectmen's appointing authority, right? If the Board is the appointing authority, they decide whether the person stays or goes. And so it, it's a little bit more about the, the overall context. When I have this language and it works properly, it's an interpretation of the policies in the Personnel Bylaw as correctly defined. So it's a question of, we have a vacation leave provision, and it says that I should have been allowed to use my vacation time after three months of employment, and I wasn't allowed to. Okay, that's a specific provision within, clearly within the bounds of a Personnel Bylaw, somebody... Somebody wants to complain about that, and it would be appropriate for a personnel board to have the authority to say, "Okay, we've heard that alleged violation of our own rules, and we need to change that." And practically speaking, that probably is a direction to the person who denied the vacation, saying, "Don't do that again," right? Because realistically, you can't unring that bell if it's already passed. But that's an example of how this can be appropriate language if the rest of the document is appropriately tailored to what a personnel board should be dealing, what bylaw should be dealing with.
Thank you.
So before I take the public, as I'm reading what Mr. Shanes was talking about on seventy-four, the same section, subsection G, where would, why, where, why, or how, I guess, would the authority to recommend presently compensated town positions, elected and appointed, not otherwise covered by the wage and salary system? Where would, for example, and if I'm wrong, I apologize, I think, I saw Lori come in, for example, a town clerk's salary is set by town meeting vote.
Yeah, so I'm glad you mentioned that, because I didn't hit that before, and I meant to, my notes, I just skipped over it. A personnel bylaw can't address elected. It really is only appointed officials, appointed employees. It's actually very clear that it doesn't apply to an elected official. So that, you can take that piece out. I know we have a couple of elected, quote, "elected" employees, your town clerk, your treasure collector, I think, are the two that I'm aware of. So the bylaw couldn't apply to those scenarios.
And also, I believe it's in here somewhere, but you talked, it also would not affect unionized employees.
Correct.
So that's what you were saying earlier, the scope gets narrow pretty quick.
Yeah, it does. Yeah, I will just say, I mean, I'm not sure if this was your question, Mr. Chairman, where it says, you know, "The board shall recommend compensation for all presently compensated town positions," take out the elected, "and appointed, not otherwise covered by the town's wage and salary system." So this is not, it's not uncommon, what this really is, is like a gap filler. So you have a schedule, a list of positions, you have a grade system in place, there are many times, because of just changes in the workplace, staffing models, whatever, where you're creating a new position, and it doesn't exist on the schedule. What this really can talk to is, well, look, if this is the group that had at least the first pass on a compensation and classification system, to have the responsibility to decide where a new position fits in that, I think is what this is aiming towards, and that is fairly consistent with personnel bylaws, personnel board authorities. Usually, and I assume this is what you do here, the recommendation on the compensation schedule is actually, right, it's an amendment to the bylaw every year, and it's put before the town meeting. So they vote it, and they appropriate the funds to support it, as opposed to any individual saying, "Well, just give everybody 2% increase." I assume that's how it works here, and if there's some other provision about town governments that's different than, I'm just not immediately aware of that. But that's what I think paragraph G is intended to get to.
Okay, so one more question, one more follow-up on G, and I'm going to use Principal Assessor for a minute. She's appointed through the Board of Assessors. We did a salary classification study, paid for by grants, that was adopted by the board as a means going forward, and if Lisa's position was set at a certain rate, a certain, like, four, three, I forget what I, three?
Certain grade, yeah.
So would the authority be usurped by the personnel board that has proposed to come forward and say, "No, she deserves to be a four," or, "No, she deserves to be a two," and then they come back to her board and say, "We say because we said in our bylaw." Would that usurp the vote that we took as a board to adopt and implement that plan?
So, again, have you historically presented the wage schedule, and I don't mean literally the document, but somehow you amend your personnel bylaw probably every year, you know, as a means of addressing the wage schedule, right? Because the wage schedule often is an attachment to a personnel bylaw, and it's going to be different from FY twenty-four to FY twenty-five to FY twenty-six. If you're not operating that way, and it's more personnel policy, and you just are seeking the general appropriations a little bit different. But I think if your question is, "Does paragraph G basically allow for a change of an existing grade structure by the personnel board as is?" I don't read it that way. I read it as recommending compensation for all presently compensated positions, not otherwise covered by the wage and salary system. So it really, it's a word that's a little funny, because it talks about presently compensated as if it's here right now. But anything that's here right now should already have a grade and classification, so it should already be on the grid. So I think the only way I can really read this is to allow it to make recommendations. Again, recommendations only with respect to positions that you might be filling now but aren't there, right? So you just hired somebody yesterday into a brand-new title, and what's the process we go through to decide where that fits on the wage schedule? I, obviously, I don't know what the intent was behind it, it's just I'm telling you how I read it.
Mr. Chairman, I can, just quickly, for people who don't know how we did the wage schedule, the wage schedule was done as, it was developed by, as a result of a grant study. An independent person came in, did an area study, and we came up with market rates, and they created a schedule that I think is drawn up through twenty-eight or twenty-nine. The personnel, they presented, it was Don Jacobs, I probably remember that presentation, but he presented it to the personnel board at the time. The personnel board at the time voted to adopt it. What's that?
Excuse me, excuse me, excuse me. I can hear you guys when you're talking, thank you.
The personnel board voted to adopt it. The chair at the time, I think it was Mrs. Smoak, was the chair of the personnel board, came to the Board of Selectmen. The Board of Selectmen adopted it. And then every year, based on that study, people are evaluated, a merit pool is developed from available funds, and it's voted at town meeting. The last time it was presented in the form of an article, it failed the town meeting. But all of those increases fall within that wage scale that was developed originally by Don Jacobs.
Which was adopted by vote.
Yeah, and increases are based on employee evaluations.
Okay. Thank you.
I was unfamiliar with that history. Thank you.
After the new information, any questions from FAA?
No.
No? At this point, we'll open it up to the crowd. Don, as usual, come up, identify yourself. We don't have to give you exact house number, where you live.
John Breyer, sixteen Flaxfield Road. Counselor, thank you very much for your analysis, it's greatly appreciated. Everything you've pointed out, this is from our existing bylaw prior to 2018. So there's nothing, so the entire first page that you've basically ripped apart was what we've been operating under until 2018. The only thing that I'm changing is where in 2018 it was changed to assist in establishing, we put it back to the way it was, which was establish. So the appointment, everything that you discussed, and you spent probably twenty minutes on, was our bylaws for decades. We didn't change anything, we're simply, and that's in our bylaw today. So if it's not crossed out or read, that's in our bylaws today. So you're arguing about something that you think I'm proposing that's already in our bylaws. Originally, we were simply going to seek to rescind the 2018 fall town meeting vote that basically gutted the personnel board. And then we were going to, in the next citizen petition, simply rescind the town administrator bylaw, which didn't exist until 2019. But we looked at it, and we said, "There's merit to having, there's merit to not gutting the entire thing." So what we tried to do was take the old bylaw, take the new bylaw, for instance, you know, having a human resource managers, a pretty good darn idea, right? That didn't exist prior to the 2018, right? So as you go through, right, so the first page, the only thing we're changing is back to what the language was in 2018. Everything in blue is in our bylaw today, so there's not a single change there. And then what we, the reason why we put the volunteer members, to have the selectman chairman, FAA board chairman, and the town moderator, is because for four years, there was zero attempt to fill the personnel board after it was gutted. It was only recently that we started seeing the, hey, personnel board, there's five vacancies, five vacancies. And so we just wanted to put something in there so that the town wouldn't stop operating. So if you had two people on the personnel board, and they didn't have enough for a quorum, where then you'd step in temporarily so that business could continue to operate in town and have a say. So this actually empowers the Board of Selectmen more than the power you had previously. The responsibilities of the personnel board, that is all in the bylaw prior to 2018. Everything you pointed out here, the grievance process, that's all in there. And you spent a lot of time on G, about the elected and appointed officials, that was in the bylaw previously. And the reason why is, you know, for an independent elected position, like, like the town clerk, what better than to have an objective third-party board say, you know, go before the town meeting, because they're not saying this should be the compensation, again, it's "shall recommend." And so for that personnel board to say, "You know, we are seriously underpaying our town clerk, and based upon the way they've operated for decades, looking at all these other towns," this is really the range. So all this red language was prior to, you know, those votes that were done in 2018 and 2019. We actually expanded the power of the Board of Selectmen with the personnel board. And if you go to, for instance, we thought it was very positive, so if you go to seventy-four dash five, the method, all right? We talk about personnel boards adopting policies and procedures and stuff like that. One of the things we thought was fantastic that has occurred since the change was the fact that the Board of Selectmen has the final vote to have anything put in the personnel policy or the employee handbook and things like that. That didn't exist previously to that other bylaw. So we said, "That's worth keeping." And so in order for, the personnel board does not have the authority to change the employee handbook or any personnel policies on their own. They have to vote on it, and then at the end of the day, it's the Board of Selectmen who say yea or nay. And we thought that worked well with some of the changes. So we tried to do, and again, that's why we didn't go to rescind those previous votes, because there's a benefit to have them both, but we wanted to create a collaborative environment. And then the annual report, we put that in, because most of the towns that we looked at had that on their personnel board for the human resource manager, where they kind of do a thing about employee churn and things like that, but, I mean, if you guys want to strike that, that's fine. The reason why we wanted the whole personnel board put back in here is because there is an inherent conflict of interest that could occur, where if you have some employee in town approach the personnel director, who happens to be the town administrator, about what they consider is a human resource issue and something of a confidential nature, but, right, because they're wearing both roles, they say, "Whoa, this is really serious, and my town administrator had, I've got to let the Board of Selectmen know about this." So by having the town administrator not be the personnel director, I mean, ultimately they could be, we call it the human resource manager, it's still their authority to appoint that human resource manager, and we think there's a good reason to have that segmented, because what if the grievance is against the town administrator? What if the, you know, it's really sensitive, and we had a similar situation that occurred just a couple of weeks ago, you know, where, you know, so we think that this can void a lot of conflict.
John, I don't think that's fair, because I don't know what you're talking about. If you know about some situation that happened in town, that was an inherent, use your words, an inherent conflict between an employee and the town administrator, A, that's not fair.
No, you're twisting things again, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, I did not say that. All I'm saying is that if someone approaches...
You said it happened a couple of weeks ago. I don't know anything that happened.
Well, check the Board of Health agenda, and you'll be able to figure things out. I'd like to continue on if I could.
Well, when the Board of Health reports to the Board of Selectmen, John...
The Board of Health is an independent board.
Correct. When they report to the, which they don't, is my point.
Yeah.
As Mark Terry, the Counselor Terry stated very clearly, the way our town is set up. And again, I'm not sure exactly, I see the agendas, and I saw some executive session stuff on there. I'm not privy to it, I didn't go to it. So if you have knowledge of something that happened that we don't, that's not, I don't think that's right, and I don't think that's fair.
I don't have knowledge of anything that is not part of the public record already.
So then how do you know, how do you know it was a big issue that occurred a week or two ago?
Because it was right there in the agenda.
Some kind of executive session?
Steve, you're a master of distraction, I'd like to move on if I could, Mr. Chairman.
Well, you can, John, but I think...
Thank you.
I'm trying not to interrupt you, but that was kind of important to me. If you're talking about some kind of personnel issue, and I, if you're telling me you don't have any knowledge except what you read on the agenda, because you said, "Check the agenda." I'm not twisting, I'm using what you said. It happened a couple of weeks ago.
If you checked the Board of Health agenda, there was an issue with one of the Board of Health members who had reached out on what she thought was a confidential nature about the possibility of her moving to New Mexico, and next thing you know, it's townwide information on a public email. That is not right.
Do you understand that came from the Board of Selectmen or the town administrator?
I'm saying it didn't come from her. All right? So that's what I'm saying, is by segmenting it, by having a human resource manager, which we think is a good idea, you insulate yourself from that. The town administrator can focus in on town administrator work and rely upon a human resource manager. Everyone knows in business, right, the most effective span of control is five to seven people per manager, right? If the town administrator can pretty much leave the human resource stuff to the personnel board in conjunction with the human resource manager, they will become more effective in procuring the grants and working with the other department heads. It's a collaborative environment, and most of the stuff that you ripped apart within this is either in the bylaw already, or was prior to 2018. We just wanted to incorporate some of the positive things that we thought that were in the revised one into this as well. I mean, if it's easier to simply say, "We'd like to rescind the vote of 2018 on the full town floor," we can do that, but we thought to move the town forward, that'd be more beneficial. And the reason why we then did the town administrator bylaw is because the duties, which were taken from the personnel board and then put into the town administrator bylaw under the personnel director stuff, we had to make them consistent. So we had to move them back and forth. And then when we were looking at the town administrator bylaw, we noticed, you know, jeez, you know, if you're going to do it, you know, let's clean up the other things, you know, as far as the qualifications. The one thing that was very inconsistent with other towns was the two-thirds requirement in order to terminate or not renew a town administrator. Most towns were a simple majority of a full board. In a town, you know, situation that you're in here, where, you know, a board of five, it basically requires an 80% vote. So we changed that to simple majority to give you guys more flexibility and to match other towns that are out there. When we talked about, and again, this is, this doesn't affect our current town administrator, this would be for if there's any vacancies in the future, right, because there's already contracts. This does not affect any contracted employees, right, because they have their own contracts, and never in there does it, on the personnel board side, does it say things. But what we wanted to do here is to make sure that if there is a vacancy with the town administrator role in the future, that the FAA says, you know, so let's just say the personnel board says, you know, "We've researched the area, and this is the range for the town administrators," so maybe 110 to 150, whatever it might be, right? And then the FAA, when they're preparing their budgets to give you a recommendation, say, "Yeah, you know, you're okay." They're not, they have no say, and nowhere in here does it give them the power to usurp your authority to negotiate with a potential candidate. All they're doing is setting the high-low parameters, like any business, right? This is your low, this is your target, and this is your high. And they're giving you the parameters in which you can negotiate any salary or compensation. That doesn't exist today, and it's just part of the collaborative process. The, you know, the other changes in here are related to trying to make sure there is no conflict between the two. Removal and suspension, again, we just took what other towns had. If you don't, I mean, I have no problem leaving the removal and suspension the way it is today, but there's a bunch of things that, you know, seem to work, clarify processes. Now, I understand that by clarifying, as Counselor said, that we may be narrowing the flexibility, and if that's the case, then let's not narrow it. You know, if the town counselor thinks it's better to have it broader as far as removal and things like that, it doesn't matter. All we care about is creating a collaborative... All we care about is creating a collaborative environment. The Personnel Board was a board of very dedicated volunteers. Often what we found were that they were human resource professionals. One of them, the, one of the previous ones, I believe, was the Director of Human Resources for Hanover Insurance, and she served for years. And I mean, we're getting free expertise. Having a collaborative board who is doing all the due diligence, using the Collins Report, you know, as, or the Collins School, as a guide, we thought it was wonderful. And that's why a lot of the stuff, you know, is modeled after that because it is something you have to stay constantly educated with. This is not an attempt to usurp the authority of the board. The one thing that we did change in the Town Administrator bylaw, which we had not found in any other Town Administrator bylaw, was the ability for the Town Administrator to appoint without Board of Selectmen approval. That we required, to that we changed, so that any appointments have to be done and approved by the Board of Selectmen. All right? Especially when you're looking at, you know, senior level, you know, grade, you know, three and four type positions, you've approved. But that changed in 2019. You should always be the appointing authority for any significant position in town. And it should not be where someone else appoints it and unless you say no, it's no good. So that's also changed to give the board the proper authority back. So that's all I have. If there are any questions, I mean, I'd be very open if Town Counselor, if Counselor would like to really, you know, give a red line version, we'd be more than happy to look at revising it so that he feels more comfortable with it.
Mr. Johnson.
Chairman, thank you. Mr. Breyer, what specific examples do you have that could have been solved by these changes that you're proposing, changes or restoration that you're proposing?
Would it have made a difference? I don't know. But when you look at when the library employees were all laid off, all right, during the budget battle, and we lost our entire call department at the fire department, that's why I got back involved with the town. I'm reading that one day, what the heck is going on? It never happened before. And I think having some, a board like the Personnel Board that could be on top of the situation, help communicate it and make sure actions are not done unilaterally, I mean, there were lives put at risk. And that's the only reason why I'm here today. Because I know many of you think it closed, you know, a year ago, that this is water under the bridge, but this is the final open issues. And I'm hoping that the restoration of the Personnel Board, you know, having a Human Resource Manager and, you know, as I know, the Order Committee is going through the process with the state, we're done. We're done. And hopefully what occurred last year will never, ever happen again. Because I don't want anyone ever to go after my public safety, my police, my fire, threatening to fire them if we don't do a tax increase. Those should be the last departments cut. And that's why I'm here. And so it's, I mean, really, I'm getting passionate, but you asked me what I feel. Yeah.
Mr. Chairman? I didn't ask you how you felt. I asked you to provide specific examples of how these changes or restoration of the changes would be a benefit for an actual problem that happened.
Yeah, so I believe the Personnel Board would have prevented a lot of those layoffs and being fired and everything that occurred. I also believe that the whole interview and screening process for some hires could have been avoided. There have been some wonderful, wonderful hires that have occurred under this, you know, under the way it is today. I mean, look at, I mean, jeez, we, look at our accountant, our police chief, home run hires, home run hires. Olivia, you know, good hire. But I have full confidence that the Personnel Board would have gone through the screening process and gotten those people over to you as well. I think the Personnel Board as a collective could have prevented a lot of those issues from the 2023 budget crisis.
Mr. Johnson?
Going back to the original question, you mentioned that the library layoffs could have been prevented by the Personnel Board. Can you tell me how the policy as presented would do that?
Peter, you're chairman of the Personnel Board. Would you?
John, I want Peter to come up, have him come up. I can't have you turning around.
Okay.
Please, I'm not being.
Through the chair.
I'm not twisting and I'm not being confrontational. I just, please.
Through the chair, may I call Peter Fox up?
What was the question, please?
My question was for Mr. Breyer.
So through the chair to Peter? Peter, the situation, how, the way in which the library employees were given notice and determinations and the letters, could that have been done better or more efficiently or prevented if we had a Personnel Board?
In my opinion, absolutely. We've had a Personnel Board up until 2022. Five members that did the review processes, they did the screenings, they did interviews for hiring, they worked with the department heads through that. Mrs. Gardeki was a member of that board. The board worked for years. If there was a possibility of a potential layoff, the Personnel Board would have been involved to discuss that issue. And I believe that the Personnel Board could have avoided that shutdown and that layoffs had the Personnel Board been involved. Does that answer your question, sir?
No, sir.
So I want to ask a question. How would the Personnel Board come up with the $300,000 that we roughly needed ballpark to keep those people employed?
Mr. Sullivan, that's a very unfair question. The Personnel Board doesn't come up with $300,000 and you know that.
Correct. So the layoff notices, they weren't terminations, they were layoff notices, I believe. They weren't totally, weren't coming back because they're all back.
No?
Only, except for the library director who resigned.
Okay.
And went off to another town.
The person, the library employees received their notices, just as the Police Department did and the water and all the other union employees. The difference between that and the library is the library employees were given a final date that they were laid off and the library was closed. They were given a final date and no other organization was.
Mr. Johnson?
Mr. Fox, how would the Personnel Board have avoided a?
We would have met with the Administrator, we would have met with the Director of Library, we would have discussed this, and we would have worked out and we would have noticed that they should not have had a final date of employment on that, the notices they received. I met with the Administrator, the employees of the library and the library board, and we were able to get those employees reinstated before town meeting. They never should have been laid off before the final budget was set at the town meeting. That library should not have closed.
So I can't, and again, the issue of the layoff of any person during that budget crisis was awful. This board took every single position serious, whether it was public safety, library, town hall staff, took it very serious. We knew it was a funding issue. And I had spoken to Mr. Breyer. This board, not counting Mrs. DeShane, she wasn't here at the time, Mr. Joseph was, and I believe he voted with us, was, was it Marcy? Marcy, I'm sorry, Mr. Marcy. The fear was, and John got up, John Breyer got up at town meeting and said, I hope, or you know, I know it, my heart, I hope everything's going to pass. And we said, hope's not a strategy. So our fear was, if the overrides didn't pass, we'd be, which two of them didn't, we would have been three to four months minimum into the fiscal year, spending at the level that we assumed we were going to get funded at. And if we didn't get the overrides, we would only had, if it was three months, nine, four months, eight, to make up that balance, that difference that we were going to be short. And what I said before, it wasn't, it was more rhetorical, it wasn't directed at you, Peter, I'm sorry if you took it that way. The library layoffs, like any other layoff, and I don't think anybody from Water Sewer got laid off, police chief, was budgetary. And the chief came to us and said, well, I can probably move some monies around and protect the position for a couple, an extra month or two. The other positions was the fear if everything failed. Or if one thing passed, we would be well into the fiscal year and have to make up an entire deficit in a tightened timeframe. It was never done.
Mr. Sullivan, I'm not going to debate the budget issue. The question I was asked was, was there anything that the Personnel Board, could they have possibly done to prevent that? And I've answered that question and my answer was yes. Mr. Ruder and I met with the library employees. They were able to stay on the job until the budget was finally set, so I think we helped or I helped. There was no Personnel Board at that time. I honestly believe this town needs a Personnel Board. We need to be involved in interview process, the hiring process, the screening process, the grievance process. If somebody has a grievance against the Administrator, who do they go to? The Assistant Administrator?
Right here. They go to their department head and they come to the Board of Selectmen. You served, you know, you had to handle things. They come to us.
If they want to go to a Personnel Board, there is no Personnel Board for them to go to. All the other employees have union representations, the town employees don't. We act as a guideline for them regarding personnel rules, regulations and policies. We did it for years and years and years with no problems. It's important that we reinstate the Personnel Board and work with the Administrator and work with the Human Resources Director. We're not trying not to work with people, we're trying to reinstate it to make it easier and better for you.
Well, I appreciate your sentiment. And Mr. Breyer said in his opening remarks, in his opinion, I'm paraphrasing, John, I'm not passing your words, you said something to the effect, we're actually giving you more power or more authority. And I respectfully defer to our Town Council, who pretty much said the exact opposite. And to say it was good before 2018, it may all may and well have been good. And for John to say, we ripped it apart, it was Counselor Terry, maybe we, the town, we, the town, not the Personnel, not sing out the Personnel Board or the Board of Selectmen, the things that Mr. Attorney Terry brought up, we were doing wrong. Just because it worked. That's the impression I got from a lot of what Counselor Terry said.
When I served on the Personnel Board, I believe it was six years and I was chairman for three, we worked with the Selectmen, we worked with the Administrator. We had no problems. It was very smooth, very concerned. We had an interview process that consisted of five members independently reviewing the candidates, reviewing their backgrounds and their resumes. And then each of the five members selected their top three or top five, and then a combined agreement was made for the top three. We involved the department heads during these processes and then a decision was made. I do not believe that that's the way it's happening right now. We've had a recent hire that's questionable.
Did I authorize, did I do that hire for the Selectmen? I'm just confused. If that's the one that.
You tell me.
Excuse me?
Who hired them?
Who are we talking about?
If I may, I would suggest you keep individual employment circumstances out of.
Thank you. I'm just trying to think if I made a mistake when I.
I'm not going to answer that question, you know. That's not fair, Mr. Sullivan.
Well, it's not fair you put an innuendo out, Pete, and I can't, I can't ask you what you're referring to.
I didn't refer anything to the Board of Selectmen.
I thought you said you just made a question, there was just a question or hire made. I said, by whom? Was it by us? Because if it was by us, I wanted a chance to address it. But it's okay, you don't want.
By the town.
Does anybody else on the board have any questions from information that's been brought forward by the petitioner?
Not a question, but a statement. I understand that it sounds improbable, but I will, if this board does come to fruition, I wish it was elected and not appointed. Because if you're going to take, and I, trying to choose my words carefully here, I think that, I think an elected position would give more power to people to choose who goes in as opposed to people appointed. And I, that's all. I might be wrong about wanting it to be elected, I don't know. Just a thought.
Mr. Shane?
I do have a question for the petitioner. So I tend to agree with Mr. Fox that there aren't a lot of issues with having an interview board or an interview panel or the Personnel Board as an advisory board. But the language that's in the petition, to me, seems to go way beyond that. Because if, if what we were doing was looking for a Personnel Board that's going to serve as an interview panel and it's going to do the vetting and scoring and all of those things, I just, I don't know why we're adding more language in from 2018. And again, to echo what the Chair has already said, you know, that language from 2018 that doesn't exist anymore, may not exist for a good reason. It seems like it to me, as I was doing some research, it looks like a lot of that language was part of, for example, the town of Ashburnham's Personnel bylaw, which they just rescinded last year in lieu of policies that would be easier for their, they have a town manager, but for their town manager and their HR to kind of, kind of mess with. So all of that said, the question that I have is, this Personnel Board petition doesn't seem to create a new position or allocate funding for a Human Resources Director. But it's been said a couple of times that that's really the thing that's important here, is having someone independent of the Town Administrator to serve in those HR roles. So what exactly, like, how does this serve that end?
So on your first portion that you talked about, like the interview committee, could you show me where you think it exceeds? Because it specifically says, right, employee hiring process, candidate screening, recruitment, testing, selection, appraisal, evaluation.
Sure. And then it talks about the additional responsibilities, including but not limited to employment, job classification, hours and work, hours of work and overtime, benefits, leaves, promotions, reductions in force, performance evaluation, transfers, corrective action and/or employment-related practices and policies. Like I.
That's in the bylaw today for the Personnel Director. We simply shifted it.
Exactly. But it's for the Personnel Director, not for a board of five people. And that's the reason I'm asking. So this is ceding power away from the position.
We want to eliminate the Personnel Director.
But even if you were to replace the Personnel Director with an HR Director, that's something that an HR Director should be doing.
We don't want to do that either. We thought there was benefit that the Town Administrator's office, you have someone in the position today, Michelle had done, acted as the HR Manager, administrative Secretary to the Board of Selectmen, that would continue, that would empower that person, that would be the person. When advocating a separate hire for 21 people.
Right now, that HR Manager is Olivia, isn't it?
Yeah.
So we have an existing HR Manager.
So why wouldn't she just continue the role?
Because this bylaw says she can't. Because you're giving those things to a Personnel Board instead.
No, not at all. All we're simply doing is saying that the Personnel Board is the one that does the HR, is the Human Resource Department, and as a Human Resource Manager, it's her job to implement exactly what she's implemented today, the employee handbook policies, the Personnel policies.
So in that case, does that mean that the Personnel Board is reporting to the HR Manager and not the other?
No, no, the HR Manager for those functions is accountable to the Personnel Board.
Okay.
For the HR functions, for that segregation of power, separation of power.
Yeah, so that's the piece that I don't fully understand. You can't have an HR Manager, in my mind, that is supposed to be working with the Personnel Board, but like, is also reporting to the Personnel Board, like, you can't-
Well, Michelle-
HR Manager is doing the day-to-day while all of this language is in there. Because as far as I know, when Michelle retired, like, this language was not in the Personnel Board, so it was a function of her job. And isn't that what we're supposed to be moving towards, a professional status?
This language was stricken on this part in 2019. So, any duties that the previous Executive Secretary might have had on the HR side did work with the Personnel Board. They were the authority.
Yeah, I think I'm good.
But to take Janice's argument, the way it's crafted now, you just said, again, I'm not passing your words, if I'm wrong, correct me, that Olivia, who's an appointment by the Board of Selectmen-
No, by the Town Administrator, you never approved her.
Olivia, who's appointed, I'm not sure the process, if he's correct, she was an internal hire, I know that, she was a citizen accountant.
That's right.
And she was an internal hire, so, but you just, well, you can make your faces, but you just said to-
Mr. Chairman, it's, the appointments have always been with the major departments. You appointed the Town Accountant on my recommendation, Sarah. You appointed, based in part on my recommendation, the Police Chief. You've always appointed the Fire Chief. What was the most recent one? The Board of Health appointed the Health Agent. The Treasurer Collector makes a recommendation to you directly, to this board directly, for his assistant, and you vote to appoint. There's, the only time I get involved is for staff below department head level and that sort of thing. And it's my recommendation, I don't do this in a vacuum. These hires are properly vetted through the Board of Selectmen at all times. And if we've made such great hires, and we've done our job with one exception that nobody can ever mention or talk about, which in and of itself makes this a really difficult argument to make, if somebody made a mistake or somebody didn't make a mistake, it's very subjective. But if we've done so well with everything else, and Labor Council is telling us that everything that was taken away in 2018 under Greg Belliakonis is a bad thing, why are we seeking to restore it? I mean, he made the argument that all of these things are removed, and then we get a counterargument from Mr. Breyer, that this is all, was all previously your bylaw, and we're bringing it back. Well, I think it was removed, it wasn't removed in a vacuum, I distinctly remember Council being involved in making a recommendation to remove it. But now bringing back something that was legally an issue is a problem.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, you know, I think there are a couple of points, and I'll piggyback some of the Town Administrator's saying that are important to highlight. So, I looked, I did look at the prior bylaw earlier today, I don't have a copy of it with me, but my very clear recollection is it did not include a number of provisions that are being proposed here with respect to the Personnel Board's role in contracts, individual contracts, in hiring, firing, disciplinary decisions. Those were not there, and if they were there, and I don't recall, so if somebody else has it, they know better, that's, so be it. But as a practical matter, I can tell you, having worked with you now as a town for 25 years, the Personnel Board has never been involved in those circumstances. Those circumstances have been between Council with some guidance from the Town Administration Office and whoever the appointing authority is. Whichever board it is, or individual who has the authority to appoint, whether it's Fire Chief, your Board of Health, the Board of Selectmen, any other board, has been involved, and the Personnel Board has had no involvement. Now, I will say that to the extent there may have been circumstances where the Personnel Board had involvement, and Mr. Fox was, you know, alluding to some things, I don't have the detail on, but to the extent there may have been involvement, for example, in trying to work through the reduction force that you had to look at a couple of years ago, or a year ago, that kind of informal involvement doesn't find its roots necessarily in whatever the bylaw says, right? Sometimes people just help, or they're people that can be a voice for someone. But I'll bring you back to sort of what I started by saying around, what a personal bylaw is supposed to be. A personal bylaw is supposed to be a document that determines the classification and compensation system that the town uses, talks about the paid leave benefits that are in place, and then they have a role for that. I've seen some that have, like, layoff procedures defined as a procedure, but it's establishing those rules, those provisions in place, not being actively involved on behalf of employees or on behalf of the town in terms of decision-making with respect to are layoffs necessary because of the budget. That is not a role that the statute would support, the Personnel Board being involved. Now, like I said, informally, might that have happened? I have no, I have no information on that, I'll take Mr. Fox's word on it. But I think that's a really important point here, and the idea that, you know, that I think all that, like, don't have the old bylaw in front of me, but that all that's being done is being brought, bringing back what was there before. From my read of it, there's some very distinct changes as well. And those are things where the Personnel Board, again, is involving itself in setting parameters around individually negotiated contracts, involving itself in disciplinary decisions, but it has no authority to do that at all. You know, if you cut back some of what's in here, there are things that I think that could be reconstructed and might at least be permissible, and then it's up to the town to decide what it wants to do. But, you know, as I said, there's, there are a lot of things in here that I think create significant concerns about legal enforceability.
Here, you have any other questions with no information?
I'm good, thank you.
John, I'm just gonna ask, anybody else wanna speak, 'cause you've been up? George?
Mr. Chairman, just to clarify while George is on his way up. Traditionally, and for as long as I can remember, people who work in different departments, depending on the level that they're graded at, have the ability to be appointed by the department head. For this, in this example, administration, Olivia works in administration, she replaced Michelle, that, I mean, that's squarely always been an appointment for the Town Administrator. Department head level stuff has always been an appointment for the Board of Selectmen, and we've operated like that consistently.
Mr. Petrius?
Good evening. I've been in Dudley working for about 35 years on the Water Sewer, and about, almost 40 on the Fire Department, okay? I'd been around when the Personnel Board was in session back in the day, they did a good job. The problem was usually that trying to get a quorum going and waiting and waiting to get an interview or whatever you had to do, I do remember some of that. I think Attorney Terry hit it right on the head, though. The days have changed now, the town has changed, the responsibilities, the government, everything is much larger, much more complicated. And I'll give an example, our department went through a major revamp of its personnel, job classifications, titles, compensation, all state mandated, liabilities, responsibilities, what have you, okay? If I didn't have the access to a full-time Town Administrator to assist me constantly during the weeks with a timeframe, because they gave me a timeframe before noncompliance was slapped on us, to get the staffing plan in place, we never would've got it done. I can't rely on a Personnel Board on a monthly meeting to try and go through what we have to do. And on another matter, the full-time administration is fully aware of what we do, what we, what is, what we're up against, how we operate, the whole shebang, okay? Because I go in there weekly, many times a week, and give consultation on what we're up against, what we're doing, what we have to do, what we need, monies, whatever, whatever you wanna say. And it's vitally important that you have that full-time administration in place to do that. I'm sure, you know, the Personnel Board, you know, would be a good maybe assist in a way, but in the long run, the buck has to stop at the full-time professionals to help, otherwise, we would not get anything done, and I truly believe that. Thank you.
Pete Collins. Thank you, George.
Just a quick question, for the initial hire of police officers, would the Personnel Board, if this passes, be in charge of the whole process?
No. I guess I won't speak for the people who drafted it, and it doesn't, I don't think, say they're in charge of the whole process, it says that they would develop, establish, let me just take a look at, establish policies and procedures around hiring processes. It's early, I recall it saying that, I don't, without knowing the specific section, I don't wanna speculate too much, but I don't necessarily read it as a control of the whole process. Maybe you wanna be more specific about what that means, Sergeant Chief?
Only because the, obviously, the last two years, I've gone through four hires, four promotions. I think we've done a good job as far as hiring for officers, promoting for people. And during our interview process, since the Police Reform Act of 2020, the specific questions that need to be asked to cover the liability on the town, to make sure that these officers pass through the post, and if something should've happened down the road, at least we did a due diligence to make sure that we asked these questions and performed the background checks. So, again, I echo George that there's been a lot of changes in the police field in the last five years, I don't see it stopping anytime soon, making our jobs difficult. And as far as promotions, same questions for the promotions, if we had an officer trying to get promoted to Sergeant or Lieutenant, right now, it's not, there's nothing in the union contract as far as promotions, would that fall under Personnel Board?
Certainly, as a general, if I may, Mr. Chairman, just, as a general proposition, collective bargaining agreement prevails over bylaws?
There's nothing in the collective bargaining for promotions.
Okay.
As of right now.
Whether or not the bylaw would apply at all versus practice would be a question I'd have to look at more carefully. I think that there's a provision here that talks about only addressing the circumstances where there's a conflict between collective bargaining and bylaw, and that the CBA would prevail. But I don't, I don't intimately recall your promotional processes, Chief, to be able to speak to it better than that.
We use an assessment center, and I actually developed one, presented to the Town Administrator and to the board, that's a more fair process, and it's in line with most departments, what they do is written test, assessment, and then the scoring sheet, depending on experience and education, military. We've kinda gone away from just the interview process to make it more fair, and we involve a panel from the outside that has no clue who these people are, and I just want to make sure that I'm still able to go through the process, recommend-
Yeah, I mean, certainly the process you're using is a perfect example of modernization of process, and making, taking steps to run systems that focus on getting the best candidate rather than who might know somebody, which is, let's be honest, that's the way it used to be even 15 years ago. I'm not saying here, but just generally. So, I'm not sure I can offer any more immediate response, Sergeant Chief.
So, I guess the question I would ask, well, for the Chief's example, the union membership stops at the Sergeant level, the Lieutenant is not covered under contract-
Correct.
-under an employment agreement, but that person, for example, in that, you all set? I just wanna finish. So, that person falls in between collective bargaining and statute, which explicitly states the Chief reports to the appointing authority. So, would the Personnel, and I hate to put you on the spot if you don't have the answer, would the Lieutenant, and by extension, the Deputy Chief, Assistant Chief, I forget his exact name, he's also out of the union, he's not a Chief, would the Personnel Board have any, as proposed, authority to exercise, we have a retirement coming up, if it passes, would they have authority to weigh in on the Deputy Chief, who's not unionized nor is-
Yeah, I mean, it's the way I read it, and I'm looking at the, I think I'm looking at the Town Administrator bylaw, but it basically requires, as I read, the Town Administrator recommend approval by the Personnel Board, and if it meets with the approval of the Personnel Board, that appointment then can make it up to the Board of Selectmen, assuming it's your appointment. I think with the Fire Department, I believe the Fire Chief is the appointing authority, and we operate under that structure, which would mean likely a different outcome for the Deputy or Assistant Chief, because the Fire Chief would be the appointing authority, so it wouldn't be with the board, and quite frankly, that provision wouldn't even apply, because it doesn't purport to address appointments made by anybody other than the Board of Selectmen. As to the Police Department, the Town Administrator's talking about who the appointing authority is, so I'm gonna, I'll answer the question based on my assumption that it's the Board of Selectmen, but that may not be correct. If the Board of Selectmen is the appointing authority for police lieutenants, then again, the Personnel Board becomes sort of an intermediary between a potential recommendation from the Town Administrator and the Board of Selectmen's appointing authority. And I would suggest that, you know, if something got stopped legally, the Board of Selectmen has the authority to make the appointment and could just ignore the provision about the Personnel Board. I don't like recommending that approach, because it just creates conflict down the road, right? Then the Personnel Board or its members or community is gonna say, this is what it says, you're not following the bylaw, and you're gonna get my advice, it says, the bylaw doesn't stand, and it becomes incredibly disruptive to a community, have those kind of conflicts going on. I'd rather see that we get it right the first time. So, I'm not sure if I've lost your question, Mr. Chairman, at this point, but that's where I see the Personnel Board being involved in these potential appointments at that level, because they're not covered by collective bargaining. And collective bargaining agreements don't address appointing authority, right? They address the terms and conditions of employment, like paid benefits, like compensation, et cetera. The appointing authority is established by statute, not collective bargaining. So, that, I guess that's the key question I think you're asking, which is what would the Personnel Board's involvement be as compared to either the present or what I believe was the past? And that's where I see it.
So, one more quick question. So, by extension, George, you got up to speak, and George's reports through the elected Water Sewer Commission is not us, it's not covered by contract, I'm not even sure if you have an employment agreement, George, would Personnel Board be able to insert themselves into, if George was to leave, retire tomorrow, not that I've encouraged you to, George, but I have, you know that, would they have authority to insert themselves into the process? Because you said earlier, the way this bylaw is crafted, it's clearly narrowly focused and defined coming, including the next one, towards one position and one board, would that affect George?
Yeah, so if, take his position, my understanding is that the Water Sewer Commission is the appointing authority for George's position.
Right.
So, if this bylaw, which I believe only is intended to address appointments, or only seems to address appointments made by the Board of Selectmen, this would not impact what the Water Sewer Commission could do, what the Board of Health could do, or any other appointing authority within the town's structure.
So, we currently have an interim Highway Superintendent, if he's not promoted to full-time or declines, and we have to go out, if this passes before the process starts, how much would they, again, insert themselves in the process, which you said clearly, it's an appointment under statute by us? So, Personnel Board comes back with three names and they rank them, A, B, C. We do our own interview, we decide we want CBA. As the appointing authority, I would assume, under statute, we would have the ability to appoint whomever we want out of that pool, notwithstanding anybody's recommendation?
Correct, and you'd have the authority beyond A, B, C to just say, we want F, you know? And that's, that's the part, that's where this becomes an intrusion on that process, right? It's where the Personnel Board gets an opportunity to say, I know the Board has asked the Town Administrator to make a recommendation there, we can kill it before it gets to the Board of Selectmen, right? That's the place where the Personnel Board, by this language, this proposed language, would change things.
So, they could promote the candidates, or not promote, wrong word, they could provide us candidates, A, B, C, that we have access to their resumes, and we say, we like D, we wanna bring him in for an interview outside of their scope, and we can say, yeah, we like D. Because we're the appointing authority. Does that D-
Legally, yes, yes, that's what the bylaws, the proposed bylaw changes would do, or attempt to do. But I think, my answer to you is yes, legally, you all, as the appointing authority, can say, we don't want A, B, C, we want D, in your example.
Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Fox?
To address the Police Chief's question is about hiring, years ago, they had a police evaluation committee, and I was on that committee, and we- evaluation committee, and I was on that committee, and we interviewed and made recommendations. That has changed. And nothing has changed. The Personnel Board will have nothing, no responsibilities to the police hiring and his promotions and his recommendations. That has nothing to do with what we're recommending here. So, does that answer your question? It never did. They had an evaluation committee years ago, but they go to a new committee of more advanced approach, and that's not going to change. And Personnel Board has nothing to do with collective bargaining, has nothing to do with the union employees. That's totally out of the realm of the Personnel Board.
Right. So, before you step away, Mr. Fox, to take your scenario, we had a Personnel Board made up of volunteers, and I appointed some people on that board. I know you probably did. They were screening non-union candidates, for starters, to get hired to become union officers.
Yep.
So, that board has either, I don't want to say gone away, it sounds mean, is no longer. We use the assessment center, we use command staff interviews. So, I guess my point would be, you, very successful, the person, police evaluating committee is gone, not a problem with the function of a strong chief, but we want to bring the Personnel Board back as appointed to oversee the administration side of town government, because I don't, I don't know if there's a problem. I'm not saying you folks are saying there's a problem, because John got up and said we made some home run hires. So, I guess, I guess my question would be, a appointed police evaluating committee can be done away either by statute or by departmental policy, and that's okay. But a Personnel Board can't be done away or gone under the town administrator bylaw, which I understand 18, it got revised in 19 or whatever it was. But that's not good. We need to bring another volunteer board back to create another layer with potential, as I'm paraphrasing, to create conflict between two boards, including the appointing authority. That's good. Am I oversimplifying it?
When I think of the Personnel Board, I think the Personnel Board is a valuable asset to the town. It can help through the hiring process, the screening process, through grievances. That's the way it should be. The appointing authorities is not the Personnel Board. The Personnel Board makes recommendations. Say we, you have A, B, and C employees, and the Personnel Board unanimously says, well, we like A, but you like B. You are the hiring authority. You can still hire B. But we assist you in evaluating and getting information and background checks and resumes, but we're not the hiring authority. We're a recommending authority.
All right. I'm going to take it backwards, because I think, I don't think, I don't know, you answered. I just, I just don't, I can't understand why an advisory police evaluating committee is no more, and that's good, but a Personnel Board that's no more needs to come back. Second off, one second, background checks, and you know better than I, Mr. Ruda, I'm not sure what you mean by background checks, unless you're talking about resume stuff, I'm not sure, but to do like administrative queries and queries, that's not, that's not a function of any Personnel Board.
No. I mean, the statutory confidentiality around query checks is among the strictest of any confidentiality provisions in employment law. You know, to the point, it's, it's an offense to share it with anybody who's not approved to receive it, authorized to receive it, you know, in my view. If you're having a Personnel Board involved in a hiring process, they might be involved early on as a screening committee. You may have screening committees for different types of positions along the way, but the query process comes later on out, and it would not be information that a Personnel Board really should be privy to at all.
Joe.
I was query certified as a personnel clerk to query check people.
But not the board. I'm talking about the board wasn't, you were as the clerk, right?
I was.
She was clerk of the board at the time.
But the board wasn't certified?
No.
Okay. And a lot of those protections have changed. I don't know when you served, ma'am, but certainly, there have been changes to the query law, if I remember, in the last, I would say eight or 10 years ago. They're a very significant overhaul.
I was here.
Town clerk? Trying to get other people, because I see a couple of folks back there. If you folks have any comments, feel free to come up. If not, we're going to go back to repeat us.
Good evening. My name's Lori Smith, 112 Pierpont. It appears to me that this bylaw, change, this article, if it does get approved, it does take away some power from the selectmen because they're no longer an advisory committee. What you had just mentioned is what I was going to be bringing up. No disrespect to the previous Personnel Department. They were all great, committee, they were all great. They worked hard for the town. However, times have changed, so having an HR manager full-time, there's continuing education that you have to go to. The laws are currently changing, so while they may have been in the field several years ago, things changed dramatically. I know in my office, things change from year to year. So, if you have a full-time person in charge, they're taking continuous education, they're staying up to date on that. The other thing that I think makes more sense having an HR manager is doing the employee reviews, the evaluations. The department heads evaluate the people in their department, and then we meet with the HR manager, which is a good thing because they're here every day. So, whether the employees, so take my assistant for, for instance, she doesn't report to John, she reports to me. However, John has a lot of inter-innovator, and, you know, all the selectmen, they have interactions with her on a day-to-day basis, as opposed to a committee that comes in once a month or twice a month, whatever it is, for a meeting, and doesn't necessarily have that interaction. So, I think you get a more accurate idea of how the employee is performing through those interactions. So, in my opinion, I think it's good the way we have it right now, for what that's worth. Thank you.
Thank you. John.
This personnel bylaw change keeps that human resource manager, keeps the same responsibilities. That day-to-day interaction continues. The only thing is that they are accountable to the Personnel Board for the personnel policies, not to the town administrator. So, the human resource manager, what's working, continues to work. That's why we didn't go to rescind the entire vote. And I, and I know we've beat this up, so I guess I would just ask this. I think the counselor has a good idea of why we're proposing this, right? We're looking for checks and balances. We're making sure that employees who have legitimate grievances have got confidential venues that they can go to, right? We're a firm believer in checks and balances. So, if you can look at this, and if you can show us, you know, some changes of those things that do concern you, a lot of the stuff I said are in our bylaws today, we'd be more than happy to work. We're trying to work out a win-win for everybody here. So, and that's all, even. Thank you for the enormous amount of opportunity and time tonight on this. Thank you.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, I won't sort of get into what I would or wouldn't change. I mean, I'm not sure that I would change anything. And, you know, I can appreciate from the perspective of, if this is going to be presented to a town meeting, you want it in probably a better form than it's in now. I will be perfectly honest with you. Your town meeting, I believe, is coming up in three, four weeks. Realistically, taking what's here and knowing that it takes time to review, even if the board asks me, because I respond to all of you, not to the citizens, no offense, there's no way that that gets completed and completed well before your fall town meeting. It just isn't. You know, if there's further discussion needs to be had, because again, I draft, I don't draft for citizens to come forward, I draft for the town government. You're the ones that hired, labor council to the town. So, you know, I have to take my policy direction guidance from all of you. I would just say that I suspect all of you have some thoughts about maybe something that's okay, and maybe there's some things you just feel like, no, you don't need to do any of it. I'd have to have a conversation with all of you about what direction you want to give me, and then you're, you're, this is, this is something that is not realistically going to come to fruition through that type of process between now and the 21st of October, I think it is, right, that you have town meeting. So, I'm happy to help the board in any way that it wishes, but I just want to be very candid with you about that, and how many of these types of iterations that I've seen where people are exploring, they take years for a variety of reasons. People have different interests, people want to get interest from the community, there's drafting, it goes back and forth, et cetera. There's, there's a lot of work that goes into it that is not going to be accomplished in four weeks, not without leaving mistakes behind.
Any further questions from the board, towards the petitioner, council, each other, administrator, Mr. James?
I don't want to drag this out.
No.
Particularly long, but I do have one more question for the petitioner. Sorry, John, if you don't mind. So, while I was researching Personnel Boards across the state, I saw that there were a lot of different ways to set up the Personnel Board, and I know you've already said that you took language that existed from 2018. But where you had an opportunity to do something totally different, I'm just wondering why, like, the layout didn't change. So, for example, Chelmsford has a Personnel Board. Their Personnel Board is made up of five members. Four of the members are appointed by the Select Board, and one non-unit personnel member in the town is appointed, and they're appointed through vote by the rest of the employees, so that when the Personnel Board goes to make recommendations on, on personnel policy, there is a voice from that non-unit workforce. And again, it is still an advisory position. It's something they bring to their town administrator, and it's a more collaborative process. But I'm just, I'm wondering if that was something you had taken a look at, if it was something that didn't come across your desk while you were drafting this, if it's something that, you know, you would consider, I guess, going forward, is kind of striking the language that makes it, it's, that, just making it more of an advisory position with citizens and buy-in from non-unit personnel?
Well, again, that whole 74-3, that is our existing bylaw as it exists today.
Yep.
So, I didn't want to touch it. You know, the only thing I wanted to touch on that first page was, was change, assistant establishing to establish back to what it was. What I tried to do is make a minimum amount of changes over the 2018 bylaw as it existed with today. And the large bulk of this is simply taking those responsibilities which are listed under the Personnel Director and shifting them over to the Personnel Board, and having the human resource manager be responsible for the day-to-day implementation of those. That's the change. Everything else has been in our bylaws or was in our old bylaws. It's not like I was, you know, on this one here, you know, going through all these different tabs.
Sure, but, I mean, they're not in our bylaws now.
Oh, yes.
The way that, the way that Mr. Fox has explained...
This is.
Parts of it are in our current bylaws, but a lot of what you added back in from 2018 is not today in our existing bylaw.
Oh, yeah, that's right, yes, since the change.
So, the way that, for example, Mr. Fox explained the role of the Personnel Board is already in line with what's in our bylaws today. It, I mean, that's my understanding, is that it serves as an advisory board to work in tandem with the town administrator. So, I guess that's kind of the point I wanted to make, just that we already have the bylaw set up for the Personnel Board, as Mr. Fox explained it, the new, the new old language, I should say, the, the language that's in the article that isn't currently in our petition, sorry, isn't currently in our bylaw. I'm just, I just wish there was something new, I guess. I'm sorry.
Well, what's new is that it takes all those personnel powers and policies from the Personnel Director.
Yes.
It eliminates them from that, eliminates the Personnel Director position, and puts it back into the hands of the Personnel Board where it's been for decades. That's, that's what this does.
Sure, but again, like, we've not been operating that way since first...
Since 2018.
Eight, eight years, six years. It's under 100, it's around here. So, sorry. But adding those, adding those back in, now that we've moved toward a more professional, like, launch, we're making the Personnel Board more professional instead of it being an advisory role. And I guess that's, that's where my sticking point is with this. Like, I just, that's what's hard for me.
Yeah. And that's, and that's a matter of opinion, right?
Yeah.
I mean, some people think that we've gone backwards, some people think that we need to move forward. I mean, I personally, you know, I look at the town employees, and I talk to some of them, and I, I look at the employee churn. People have said nicely, oh, we're going to retire early and stuff. Morale's not good, you know? Our volunteer board, they're not good. We can't get them staffed, because none of them feel like they're being heard. And so, a Personnel Board that is truly independent, like a real human resources department, that has a daily human resource manager, I think is an asset to the employees in the town. And again, I don't want to beat this up, I'm sorry.
My main concern with that is that there are a lot of HR functions, obviously, that would be delegated to the Personnel Board, and it is unfunded. It is volunteer. And I understand, like, one of the first things that you said was that we should be able to have this and save money while we're doing it. And that seems disingenuous to me, because this is work that we should be paying for. If it's good work, we should be paying for it in an employee. And if it needs to be separate, then I think we need to look at doing a new position, not ceding it to a volunteer board. And again, like, I, I know it's, it's just a difference of opinion. And I appreciate the work that you did, and you brought it forward. I, I'm just, I'm not there.
Fair enough.
You want to be there, I'm not there.
So, I got a just quick question for John. And again, I, John, it's not passing your words, it's not confrontational, really. You just said morale's not in this order. You said we've had early retirements because morale's no good. Can you tell me, if someone's retired, it's public record, they're not here no more, we're not talking to point. Can you tell me who retired early?
I'm not going to...
I'm not talking about morale.
Mr. Chairman, I'm not going to tell you anything anymore. I'm not going to address this, I'm not going to address the banter. You know, you keep throwing this gorilla dust out there to distract from the issue. All I'm saying is, from my opinion, and from what I, as I interact with people, employee morale is not as high as it could be. Employee churn is high.
I asked you...
And I'm done for the night. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
But I'm not going to leave it unsaid. I asked you who retired early because of morale. That's what you said. Thank you for coming in, I appreciate your work. Lori? Town clerk, sorry, I should identify you by title.
Thank you. I just want to respond directly to one comment that was just made. Being an employee here, employee morale is not bad. It is a good place to work. Take the library, for instance, it's never been higher. So, I don't know who he's speaking to, but from what I see day-to-day with my peers, the morale is fine.
Again, we talked about it during our administrative review the other day, and I spoke to many employees as part of my review. And I would hope people, 20 years I've been elected, been in town since the late 80s, I would hope if there was a problem, I would have heard about it. I agree with the sentiment of the town clerk. Mr. Johnson, do you have any hand up?
Just, no, I'll defer to...
I just, I know Mark is chomping at the bit, you know, and we're chomping at the bit to get the meeting to start, but I have just a couple of questions I want, I want to ask Mark just...
I wasn't chomping at the bit for anything, but go ahead.
Couple of things would, I think, offered that makes, you know, was, I'm not going to say it was inflammatory, but a couple of things were thrown out to kind of get people to think, you know, that this is going to be a different situation than it actually is according to what you've gone over in terms of passing the personnel bylaw. You mentioned that, you know, that there are other municipalities in the Commonwealth that are going towards the same model that we have with an HR manager working for a director of personnel, which is actually the town administrator. How do they handle the issue if there's a TA, a complaint against their TA, without a Personnel Board, I mean?
So, I would say the most common structure in the communities I work with is that the town administrator or manager is principally responsible for the administration of day-to-day personnel issues. Many communities now have, like, an assistant town administrator that has the human res... Many communities now have, like, an assistant town administrator that has the human resources function under the authority of the town administrator. It's not, like, this contemplates sort of a, a bylaw-based dual position, I think, town administrator and then an HR manager. That's not, that's not typically what you see in a bylaw, what you see in the bylaw is something like the town administrator shall be the Personnel Administrator, have certain authority related to that, but it's, it's, like I said, it's increasingly common for those communities also to have somebody who's an HR manager or HR director that just exercises the day-to-day authority, really delegation from, excuse me, delegation from the town administrator. So that, that's the most common structure in, in place, and I think the one that quite frankly makes the most sense. To your question, um, the, if there's a complaint about the town administrator, really a complaint about anybody, the appointing authority always has some voice in that. So for the town administrator here, that position is appointed by the Board of Selectmen. If there's a complaint against the town administrator, it goes to the board, and the board has the ability to investigate that, um, to meet an executive session with the employee over that and resolves that. Quite frankly, the thought, I think, of having sort of a HR manager who is under the authority of the town administrator generally, but parses off and deals with HR issues separately through the Personnel Board, is, it, it's a little bit of, um, a myth, in, in the sense of, like, having that work, because that person's always going to be under the town administrator anyway. And so, the town administrator has to provide that supervision and oversight for that person doing their professional job. That is not the role of an appointed or elected Personnel Board to supervise an HR manager. And I don't think that's necessarily the way it's written, but certainly some of the comments I think have been shared tonight suggest that the HR manager position conceived in this petition would almost report to, or work under, or with, depending how you want to frame it, um, with the Personnel Board. Now, I know you answered your short question with a really long answer, reiterating the point.
Because I didn't want it to, I didn't want it to just remain, because it, you know, invokes a lot about me as town administrator, a lot of this discussion has been surrounded about how things are under my management as town administrator, and so, I want to make sure that if there's some sort of inference that people are afraid of me, or, you know, they're working in a death style here, or whatever the case may be, that they know that there are, there are, they have the ability, if there's, if there is some sort of a, a concern or a complaint, it doesn't have to start with me.
Yeah.
If it's about me, there are other places to go.
And, and quite frankly, the idea of the HR manager being the answer to that problem really is not, it's not sound, and the reason it's not sound is because that person is subordinate to you, right? So you, you never want to put a person who, it's like saying, I want to complain about the, the police chief and I'm going to go to a lieutenant. Like, no, if you want to complain about the police chief, you go to the police chief's supervisor, right? His appointing authority, which you guys work collaboratively, you oversee him day-to-day, that would go to you or potentially to the board, depending on the issue. So, the idea that you can have somebody who's in the same office, working under the town administrator, and that somehow encourages or allows for a complaint about the, the town administrator to be addressed more fairly, that really is not an effective way to structure a system. You always recognize that everybody answers to somebody, even the Board of Selectmen answers to somebody, they answer to the electorate, right? And then, and every one of them runs for office when they're sitting, when the seat comes open if they choose. So there's an accountability structure to everything, and, um, it is, you know, very simple, quite frankly, for a complaint to be brought against a town administrator to the Board of Selectmen, you know, that's part of the role is to supervise this TA.
So, if, 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 one of the other things that was dropped was the idea that we're somehow restoring checks and balances. For me to, I, I mean, the way I think about it is you have five people who are independently elected at the ballot box, that's a pretty good check and balance in place. How do other towns that have moved towards this model deal with the, you know, with the overbearing issue of now checks and balances have apparently been removed because they no longer have a Personnel Board? How do they deal with that?
I mean, the Personnel Board's role is not to serve that, to serve that purpose. So, if, I've never had a circumstance with a town that has no Personnel Board creating the kind of lack of check and balances, that's not the solution to the problem. Solution to the problem is if there's a problem with the town administrator, you go to the Board of Selectmen who appoints them. If the problem with the Board of Selectmen, that's either amongst them, if it's like a central issue, or it's up to the public. If it's somebody who is subordinate to the town administrator, is day-to-day overseer of these things, the town administrator sees it or works with the department head to deal with the issue. So there's no deficiency in the checks and balances, it already exists, you know? I mean, the, the idea of the Personnel Board being a check and balance is so far beyond the scope of what the statutory purpose of a Personnel Board is. You go back to what I said, you know, once before, twice before, it's to establish policy, it is not to have day-to-day control, and that's core to the sort of modern government concepts we've talked about before, at all levels. Boards of Selectmen are not to have day-to-day involvement in, in affairs of the town. Generally, that's the trend, right? So there still is appointing authority, but most communities that have progressed past this, you look at communities that are around here, Webster, Oxford, I mean, Oxford adopted a charter in the 70s that makes the town administrator the person that oversees the position, that oversees all day-to-day, um, matters. Grafton, I'm just thinking about, you know, that, that's the direction, I've got other towns that are working through it, as, as you are, um, some that are quite frankly much smaller than, than Dudley, but the structure and the accountability, that's not, that's not something that gets fixed with a Personnel Board, it's not within their purview, and I certainly think that if, if you're trying to create a Personnel Board with that level of strength, you're acting beyond the scope of the general laws and can't do that without some sort of either special legislation or home rule charter.
And then, and I appreciate, my last one, and it's kind of a personal privilege-type thing, there was also an inference made that somehow it was all pretend with the layoff notices and the library closing and public safety notices to scare people into voting, which we're going to, we're going to talk about eventually, Mr. May, I promise, we're going to get there in a few minutes, that it was all pretend, it was to scare people to vote their tax increases, which, of course, they have to do, we can't raise taxes, they have to vote for it. But, one thing I want to point out is, police officers were noticed, paramedic firefighters were noticed, the library was noticed, and Mark, as our Labor Counsel, if you don't believe me, you at least believe him, there is a notification period under the collective bargaining agreements. I didn't put it out there in order to make it more attractive to raise people's taxes, I, there's a legal requirement that we notice people within 60 or 90 days generally of a potential layoff, it's part of the contractual agreement. It wasn't for show, and I, and I know that that's, you know, that was one of the common arguments, that we were noticing people to try to get taxes to, you know, be increased, but, but there was a legal requirement. Was the Personnel Board, any, any former member of the Personnel Board, or to infer that a Personnel Board could have somehow superseded the legal requirement to make, to put these notices out, which unfortunately sometimes causes people to go get jobs elsewhere, which is what happened, it, I mean, that's completely false, without question.
I just want to...
Can you mind if I piggyback on that, just, I, I didn't want to speak to it before because it's part of my relationship attorney-client privilege, but town administrators mentioned it, you know, I, I was going to say, or it was in my head to say, that I was very much involved in the discussions with, with Mr. Ruda, I don't remember meeting with the board specifically or not, um, around managing those issues from a legal perspective, compliance, recognizing what your budgetary resources were, and those letters were letters I may even have drafted, um, but certainly was a part of the dialogue of, like, how do we, how are we going to be able to handle this issue, given what your financial resources are and our obligations, and I think they were under the collective bargaining agreements to give notice, and if we waited too long, we were going to then be much further into the year before we could make the layoffs effective, if that's what we ultimately had to do, so...
And I just want to say...
And just the, the follow-up, the follow-up to that was, when the amendment passed at the town meeting offered by Mr. Breyer, it did nothing to restore any, a penny to public service, nothing. It was the same budget that was presented and passed by the FAA, by this boy, and presented on the floor. So that whole thing is, is, you know, directed at me, but that's absolute nonsense, absolutely, that's absolutely incorrect.
And I want to say, I wasn't chairman at the time, I think Kerry was, I had a little more flexibility, so I know a couple of times I kind of wandered into the town hall and got involved in listening sessions. Every decision that the town, or by the board, or extension of the town made regarding potential layoffs, potential funding issues, Mr. Ruda gets the heat as the administrator. This board, excluding, Jan was on the FAA at the time, for a period, we made the decision based on his recommendation, nobody was happy, Chief Kalowitz, Chief Kocinowski was not here, Jeff Murray, um, I'm not sure, I didn't, I didn't talk to Drusilah, and as you said, you crafted. I, I'd be safe to say a hundred percent of what we, we did, our Labor Counsel, that everybody here who lives in the town of Dudley, everybody but Sarah, that's what we pay them for. We don't, my opinion, I'm a retired mailman, right, big deal, I'm not going to tell Chief Kalowitz how many cops put on the road, Dean, how many firefighters, Town Counsel, we pay him, he recommends, Mr. Ruda brought it forward to the board, and the four of us plus the one that's no longer here, it was a five-zero vote, any action taken was not unilateral out of his office. Mike, I apologize, you had your hand up, but...
Oh, sorry, I didn't want to interrupt any monologuing, but, um...
But you do plenty of monologuing, nobody interferes, interrupts you.
I would like to ask just a quick question that would kind of pertain to the FAA on this bylaw, and I don't know, I think we lost our petitioner, but, um, I don't know if Mr. Fox would be willing to answer a couple of questions, Mr. Fox?
I would rather have you select him, Mr. Breyer. Um, well, I guess, uh, one of my concerns, um, on the bylaw is just some language on the quorum. I'm not kind of clear on what a quorum is on this. It says, "In the event that the Personnel Board does not have enough permanent volunteer members to maintain a quorum, the Board of Selectmen Chairman, the FAA Board Chairman, the Town Moderator, in that order, will serve as members, temporary members on the Personnel Board, until such time a volunteer can be appointed as a permanent member of the Personnel Board." So I'd just like to, to know what the actual, what the old rules were for a quorum, was it, you needed five appointed members on the board to have a quorum? No, I said, Joan, do you remember any of that?
We had a board of five.
And three was a quorum?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, does anybody have any comment on that? Um, you know, currently I serve as the FAA Chair, that doesn't mean in the future I'll be serving as the FAA Chair, but, um, one of my, I guess my arguments for that language would be, if the FAA Chair is serving as a member of that board, um, I can, I can, I'm imminently unqualified to make any intelligent decisions based on all of those responsibilities, so, um, language of putting the FAA Chair more into budgets than I am knowledge about humans, human resources, so, um, I would just, um, ask the petitioner if he could pull that language out, uh, of the petition. Also, um, I would ask the petitioner, because the, the, the Finance Board does have two appointments to this, currently, under the current bylaws, as an advisory board, um, the Finance Board here, which is mostly involved in, in money, I don't think a lot of us, other than Joan has had a lot of experience in HR, um, stuff, um, appointing somebody to the, under the current bylaws, a little bit more latitude, um, because it's an advisory committee, so we can take appointments and have a little bit more latitude. If you add this type of responsibility to that, uh, to that board, um, it's going to take a lot more work for the FAA to vet the problem, we're almost like interviewing people to be on that board, we can't just take anybody and put them on that board. Um, so, um, if there's any guidance that you would, uh, the petitioner could kind of show the FAA as far as guidance in looking into these appointments, um, I would appreciate that before the next meeting, so, that's my only comments.
Okay. Anybody else have anything they want to say, add to this?
Mr. Chair, Mr. Vice Chair I'll, I'll work with, no matter what the plan is, I'm going to work with, you know, with the town meeting vote, whatever the town meeting decides, happy to work with the Personnel Board, happy to work with, with Mr. Fox, as I have in the past, um, and, and he brought up a good anecdote, we, where we, we're not under a collective bargaining agreement with the library employees, he came to me, and it was one of the best of that whole episode with the, with the three override tries, one of the best things we did was to be able to restore those, you know, those library aides and, and personnel and staff, so I'm happy to work towards that. But we have to be really specific when we make generalizations and we consider all of the facts, such as requirements under a CBA, and not just make a blanket statement that the Personnel Board could have avoided a fund, a revenue issue. I mean, that's a blanket statement that I think tugs at people's heartstrings, but it's just not a logical motive or reason to move forward in this direction.
Okay.
We good?
Please.
Okay. Fox saying for the town administrator bylaw petition offer, or just...
I assume we talked about both of them together.
Let it roll.
Is that with me?
I'll be talking to you. That's fine.
All right. Thank you, panel board.
Mike, you're turning the monologue, Mike.
Uh, what are we on here, Mr. Chairman? Principal, the assessor?
Anybody want recess?
Yep.
Can we get a five?
Mike, can we do a quick five-minute recess?
Sure. You guys all set for five-minute recess?
More water in the glasses. We're going to do a five-minute recess, please.
You're dragging it up, they were all buddies.
Greetings, everyone. Thank you for the brief recess. We are now going to move, I don't have the agenda in front of me, but we're going to move into the discussion of the supplemental budget, I believe.
I think the Principal Assessor is next.
Principal Assessor?
Yeah.
Lisa Byrne.
And we're going to be looking, Mr. Chairman.
Everybody that's here got the white sheet. You're at home, you see it online.
This is just my article, right?
Yep. No, you're doing the whole budget?
Just your article.
So, every five years, the Department of Revenue mandates that we do a mass reevaluation of the town. And so, we got a quote about three years ago, the project is $75,000. So rather than ask for the 75 in one year, we broke it down in fifths. That's where the 15,000 came from, and that's for fiscal 2028.
Lisa, I'm just scrolling. 15,000, right?
Yep. And we are behind in one year because we didn't get it last year.
Right.
So we're going to have to double up, or, you know, in the next couple of years, or split it in half with the $15,000 over the next couple of years.
Any questions for the Principal Assessor of the board?
Joan?
Mr. Mayard?
No, no, this has been routine, so.
Anne, you okay? Anne, you good?
You good, Anne?
That is a yes. Thank you. Thank you, Lisa.
Welcome.
On this one, we don't have a Recreation Commission, I don't think, present right now?
Recreation Commission should be all set. I think. We went over that last time. The next one.
Mr. Ruder, do you want to just quickly?
Sure.
Touch on the park grant, we mentioned it Monday night?
Yep, the park grant has been, I'm happy to announce that we've, we've got funding for that. It was announced, it was announced Tuesday, couldn't say anything Monday because we were in the sequester, but we're moving forward on the park grant, so that project is full steam ahead.
So can you refresh me, it was something like 483,000 or something?
It's like 496. We're going to ask to borrow 700 and change and finance the rest, it's a reimbursable grant, so.
All right. Excellent. Excellent. All did the work on that grant, thank you.
Mr. Chair, is Liv going to continue coordinating that for us?
We've actually, so when, yeah, when Bill Scanlon left, we were in the middle of the application process and she picked up on that and did a great job, but now we've turned, since turned it over to Recreation Commission. Just be ahead.
That's why the chair that was here last time.
So as we're looking at this, this sheet that I brought out, we're at the point now where we're just going to have, Rich was in at the last one, so he had a couple of items that he wanted to bring up, and while he's on his way out, we're looking at potential sources of funding that will become Article Three, I believe, on the warrant for adjustments in the bottom line, and we've identified those sources of funding in that column that is duly noted. And I can go into that after Rich loses.
Greetings, Rich.
Good evening. Appreciate the oper, excuse me, appreciate the opportunity to, to speak and to excuse my absence on, on Monday night. Pick up where the town administrator left off, looking to make a few changes, looking to go through, restore the OPEB trust, other post-employment benefits. Every three year, we, every three years, we go through and have our valuation done. When we hire somebody, and really, I'm not, you know, trying to poke the bear, as an employer, the town of Dudley has an obligation for retiree health insurance. We go through, we get our actuarial valuation done, they establish what we expect to pay over the next 25 years, there's an actuarial required contribution, we put it into trust. Believe it or not, we earned a decent amount of money on it in that we're no longer putting it into a money market. Side conversation, part of your audit, part of your fiscal health is some of your, some of your obligations. Originally, it was $10,000, it got pared down to 100, looking to restore that to 9,900, make that 10,000. I have the valuation with me tonight, if anyone has trouble sleeping, be happy to go through that. Appreciate that the previous two and a half hours was, was quite heavy, so we'll make this sort of a lighter lift. At the end of the day, the $10,000 is a strong token amount to be put in there. The required contribution is north of three quarters of a million dollars. That's not an option for us. The idea that year by year, 10, 20, 30, 40, all of a sudden, we're, we're making an impact. Previously, it was thought to be a pay as you go, very similar to your Worcester Regional Retirement Assessment. Little different in that when the retirement system is fully funded by, and it's a moving point, 2036, what you put there, you could direct towards this. But for right now, the $10,000 or the change in the, the budget of 9,900 is keeping, keeping in line with the previous years. Next item up would be the restoration of the part-time clerk, the 10-hour-per-week position for those, for those peak times. Tomorrow's going to be very interesting in that I'm going to have two people who are taking an education class, and that leaves me to count out change and run the mail. I know it's an honorable thing to do, but there's some opportunities where half a day with someone allows sort of that greater good, the idea that we've got somebody being educated, being trained and moving forward. How we're looking to fund some of these, we had a change in timing. Traditionally, the town of Dudley borrowed money, the selectmen signed a borrowing at one point towards the end of the fiscal year. There was always the discussion that the Fed was going to lower the rate, and perhaps if we waited a month, there would be a significant change and we could realize some savings. We hit the point of critical mass, the year ended, we have until September 30th to go through and borrow money. So when we borrowed money, and I thank the board for coming in and signing with the town clerk, the loan that had originally been planned in June, so instead of having a one-year anniversary coming up in June of '25, it's now a September '25. So everything that had been held out is just one year later. So it's a matter of a timing issue. And at the end of the year, your debt proves out, so you have X amount of dollars in your principal, we point to our five, six issuances, whatever they are, the auditors come in saying, yep, here it is, and it's, it's tied out. So the, that, that is, the debt number is a tight number as far as principal goes.
And now accounts, I'm just.
Of course.
That accounts for the debt service reduction.
Right.
That's noted as a source of funding on this spreadsheet. So there was that reduction because of the timing of the borrowing.
Rich, can you just give that number?
74.
Seven, four, 7,400, 74,604. So it's a reduction, and I'm getting a little wordy tonight, this is general fund debt, none of it was debt excluded, so it's not changing when you set the tax rate, as opposed to you had a vote in June, which was overlapping debt with the school, we were allowed to raise that portion, and that's the portion that's in the Dudley-Charlton budget. So when you go through in two months and set the tax rate, or back into the tax rate based on the, the budget that's been approved, that number's not going to change.
I just wanted that number for the record, thank you.
Of course, of course.
Thank you. Questions for the Treasurer Collector? FAA? Anybody have any questions, Rich? Rich, well, yeah, Rich, how much were you backing out for your budget?
74,604.
Is that the net?
That's the net.
So 90 grand?
So plus 6664, plus 9900, less 68914, less 22254.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Town Clerk?
Excuse me. I just wanted to voice my support for the Town Treasurer Collector for his request for a part-time clerk. Being the office right across, I could tell you how busy his office is with the foot traffic, and I know for myself too, when someone comes to our counter, it's taking away from the larger things, like he mentioned with two people being out, or even higher level things that he has to do, so it's really important, I feel, that he gets that funded. I just wanted to voice my support, you guys were great with my office, it made a huge difference, and I know it will with his too, because I see the hours he puts in just to try to maintain what could be done in that office and what needs to be done. So thank you.
Thank you, Laura. Mr. Chairman, Mr. Administrator, next up?
So, Mr. Chairman, we're, we're in the home stretch here. What you're looking at is going to be populated at the next meeting on the, on Article Three of the draft annual town meeting budget, and it will show those adjustments. So you see, you know, where you see the debt service reduction, that will reduce the treasurer's budget by 74,604, and it will be reallocated into regulatory and compliance. So we're looking at potentially two sources of funding. We've, to this day, estimated free cash at $180,000, and that's a, that's a conservative estimate, and we can get into that when we quickly go over the revenues. And I've also included that debt service reduction, that's from the budget appropriation from May of 74,604. So just to kind of go over it quickly, I'm proposing of that $180,000, we use it towards audit district, HR, conservation planning clerk salary, we're not getting, going into detail because we went over this last time, vacation buyback, education, help desk, the two assessor, assessor request of 600, 500 for expenses in education. A portion of that regulatory and compliance amount will come from free cash, 28,301. And then if you look at the bottom, the balance of that will come from, regulatory and compliance will come from the debt service reduction out of the treasurer's budget. And finally, the third would be a transfer from granted project design line, which is under administration, just over to regulatory and compliance. So that will account for the money we need to handle the regulatory and compliance issues of capital info. Retirement liabilities, that's an article. We mentioned that we were going to establish an account, an account for ongoing liabilities, plus fund it so that we can pay out our known retiring person, which I think happens this month. I reduced that from 65 to 55. I was originally going to do 15,000 seed money for the, for the article, for the article and the establishment of the liability account. I think we can just do it with five and just kind of go easy for now. We don't, we don't have any retirements after this on the horizon. The youth services librarian, we spoke with the library director today, she had a little bit of flexibility with that amount, it was originally six, it's now at four from free cash. The employee merit pool, we recalled that that was the article that failed at the Maytown meeting. We put that back into the budget as a line item, now will come from free cash. And the fiber maintenance is the cost to maintain the fiber optic lines for the back hall that we talked about last time for our public safety radio system. Our current balances, capital improvement stabilization, I think this was from the August statement, is 568904. Regular stabilization is 34495. And that opioid, opioid settlement stabilization fund that we established has 18,000 in it for total stabilization amount of 927,50547. So what we're presenting here tonight doesn't hit stabilization yet, we're good still. If we look at, any questions on that? What's that? No, go ahead.
No, go ahead, finish, finish here. No, I just, I'm just looking, my question for you was.
No, I just, I'm just looking, my question for you was, outside of the part-time clerk, what's your top three here?
Top three?
Top three expenses here that have to be paid.
The top three is number one, regulatory and compliance.
Your audit district, school, there's no-
Audit district, school. Retirement liability is gonna be a legal requirement.
Retirement what?
Retirement liability for the employees retiring this month.
When is that?
Fifty-five thousand.
Is that, that coming up?
It's coming up in October.
This October?
Yeah.
In a month?
Yeah.
That's your top three?
Well, top 10 would be a better.
I know that, but.
I mean, I don't wanna be in a position where saying that the employee merit pool isn't in the top three, but I did, I mean, the difference is, these are legal, the top three are the legal requirements. Employee merit pool just has me out on the front line in a sockade.
You were ambitious about free cash?
No, well, I can tell you what's going on with free cash. If you look at our, their revenue-
I'm noticing it's lower.
Well, this is, this may be a week old, but this is as of today. I don't have a new print.
Yeah.
We had a hit free, we had a, we were about 202,000 light on what we projected for revenue. And without going off on a tangent, we were very conservative because we had a lot of pushback during the override year that we were under projecting our revenue amounts. So we got pushed and pushed and pushed, but we were conservative. And even with those conservative estimates, we were 202,000 light with revenue. So that hits, that takes a chunk out of our available free cash right off the rip. Right now, the working amount of free cash is 400,000, and it, and with the 200,000 pulled out of it, speaking with the accountant today and the auditor, we're probably gonna come in around 200. I left it at 180 for free cash, just to be on the safe side for the purposes of tonight. So whatever that balance is, whether it's 25 or 10, I would just let it sit for free cash, and it would be no deposit into stabilization to make all of these expenses work.
Anybody have any questions for John on this?
We had a lot of end-of-year transfers that killed us.
Well, that's, that's the thing. We had 144,000 in end-of-year transfers.
And then we came in 200,000 late on.
Thank God Bay Path sent some money back to us.
Yes.
We would've been upside down there, too. You know, in a few short months, we're gonna be doing the budget.
We're gonna be right on the next thing.
I think our, our tax levy is 16,250, 250, 257?
Sounds about right.
So two and a half on that, that's only 400 grand. The school's gonna come back with probably at least no minimum then. At least if they come back at 3 and 1/4, you're gonna eat up the whole 400 grand. And don't forget, we funded their budget by almost a million dollars last year.
Up in the 280 we gave them two years ago, they said they weren't gonna take again, they took that, too.
No.
I'll dust off my projections.
Can't go back to, can't go back to that, but, you know, if you, you look at our numbers, we got 900,000 in stable. So your tax increase and your stable are gonna be gone. If we spend all of this money, we're gonna, we're gonna be real, real, real tight.
We're, we're, it's not a lot of flexibility.
Possibility of some cuts again. I mean, that's just reality. So I, you know, I do support almost every one of these to be funded.
It's hard to make a decision based on this list. There's nothing extravagant in here.
I know.
So.
But trying to, you know, see if there's anything in here that we absolutely can push off, because I just, I mean, as far as the, the part-time clerk for the Treasurer's Department, I mean, he's, he's doing, the give-back for his budget, and so that's wrapped in his budget anyway, on the give-back, so.
One, one thing that we might, we might consider, and I can have a larger discussion with Rich about this, we briefly talked about it today, is we may be able to take another hard look at the regulatory and compliance and borrow for it and push it off. That would free up another 130,000 minimum. I'm stealing from, I'm stealing from other accounts to, to bring it up to what it should be. It's really, the, the quote is more like 180,000.
Mm-hmm.
I figured 130 in here, so. You know, we, we could probably-
Before we get to the next meeting, we gotta, gotta work these numbers, because if you're gonna blow out the free cash, we're gonna, we're gonna be, we're gonna be in trouble.
Mr. Chair, so the town administrator was, was talking about, last two weeks, there's been three meetings, sort of trying to figure out a good direction, make sure that there's solid numbers here. And it wasn't until the meeting today where if regulatory and compliance is an engineering part, and I'm comparing this to the water department in that there's sort of a planning phase, and there would need to be a remediation phase, then maybe it's a bigger picture, the consideration should be a giant project being voted, which would be bonded and ultimately debt excluded, because you're throwing a few dollars at, shouldn't say a few dollars, it's 100,000. It's a significant amount. But the idea that you're paying for it with, with, with dollars, as opposed to making this part of a bigger remediation plan that you could, you could fund with a borrowing and sort of put a period on the sentence. I know things are in flux, but at the end of the day, part of what I think your engineering could be, would almost be like the water department, where they had a few dollars for the engineering costs, and then the actual pipe in the ground can be a different amortization schedule. You put a pipe in the ground, it's not for five years, it's for, it's for a longer period of time. And it's part of a framework that the Town of Dudley has an issue that needs to be addressed, and it's a, a larger approach on it. So that was, that was sort of the, the discussion that we had. Didn't go into many details, other than it's not a matter of a few water filtration systems. This is a landfill that had been operated for a significant period of time, and maybe now is the time to go through and take a look at the next capital item. That's not necessarily a, a police cruiser or something, something along those lines.
So we have, you mentioned, DEP, at the DEP meeting, she brought up, Mary Ju brought up that there's a 600,000 grant pending that looks really good, that we may get it, but she hasn't heard an announcement on it. And that's a lot of the scope, design and engineering part of this entire project. And this amount that we're asking for tonight is mostly for remediation. So if you could make a 730 or 780,000 borrowing between those two.
Does the grant cover any of the remediation?
The grant is specifically to move the project forward to the design and scope and, you know. But if you could make remediation, engineering and design one borrowing, and we'd have the option, you know, and it's, we have potential against 600,000 to pay it off with.
Do we have a, an estimated cost?
600,000.
Of the whole project?
No, just-
Just for, no.
Yeah, we're at 14 million for the whole project. Yeah. But I have those two spending items ready to go. If it's, you know, if it, if 730,000 is something that seems like a good opportunity to borrow money on and give ourselves some breathing room, it might not be a bad idea.
We're gonna need it.
Does that, through the chair, does that sound, remediation, engineering and design, does that sound like something that could potentially be a borrowing event?
Yep, absolutely. Part of your, part of your first water project had different facets. It was 1.9 million, but there's probably four different schedules, because your engineering is only five years. They're not gonna let you go 20 years on it. But there was the section of the engineering, then there were the pipes in the ground, the two stand pipes, the restoration of the wells. Everything has its useful life certificate. They lined everything else up, and when you go to market with 100,000, it's tough to gain some interest, as opposed to there's a million, 2 million, 5 million dollar project that goes out for 20 years. All of a sudden, there's an opportunity there.
That would probably be the next phase.
Rich, is there any SRF loans available for that, the first phase of that?
Likely not for design. I'm not the expert on it, but it's Ty and Bond were the, sort of the groundbreakers on this. They're, they did the, they did the, the repair of the well, which required some testing because you're using, you didn't wanna replace a well that was not up to current standards. So they did the testing, found the PFAS, and then all of a sudden, the dominoes started to fall. So you would have to think that there has to be remediation money, not specifically for the groundwater, but the delivery of clean drinking water to an area that had been, that is believed to be affected or potentially affected. Because if you're, if you're getting a loan, there, there has to be a contingency at one point, and it, it wouldn't make sense to expend money and not be able to add to it. When you start to see your red, yellow, greens on the maps, you would, you would, you would, you would expect, if the people from the state are, are speaking that way, somebody from Ty and Bond would be engineering that way, and everybody would be on the same page so that a remediation project in Dudley would be similar to pick a town who has an issue. I'm sure you could get an answer. I'm sure we're not the first that had a landfill that may have had a contaminant leech or believed to be leached.
You want to, is that something that both boards want us to work further on at some point, like in time for the next meeting to see if it's feasible?
What do we mean, next week?
October 3rd.
Next week?
Thursday, week from, 68 hours from now.
We should be able to tie everything up on, we've gone over everything, so we should be able to do votes on the 3rd.
Yeah, just gotta tighten, you gotta tighten this up a little bit and go over all these numbers.
I mean, the numbers themselves are tight.
I know, I know they're there, I know they're needed, but-
We may, you know.
I think we're in significant prioritizing mode right now.
So what I'll do is I'll send, I'll send when I have in terms of documentation for the 600,000 grant, so that should give Rich an idea as to what we're thinking about in terms of what the project really is and whether it qualifies to be bought. The quote that we have from Weston and Sampson for the remediation, would that be, is that sufficient for, is that, Rich, is that sufficient for you to make a judgment as to whether or not we can buy, or we can borrow for it?
Sure. Yeah, is there an executive summary for the, for the bid? You know, that, that first paragraph that says-
It's, it's not a bad read. It's not, it's not, it's not a binder. It's, we're literally talking six pages for both events. It's a concise memo that was sent out for the grant.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Okay. We'll work on that. Maybe we can carve out a little bit more free cash.
All right. Only the pay.
At least 100 and something worth. It would be nice to have at least 100 in free cash, no one's leaving. Wouldn't it?
Yeah.
Just kind of leave it there at the end, just to be on the safe side. You gonna take it right to the-
Yeah, might as well take it right down, right down to the, leave a little in there, we'll get a pizza or something.
All right. I don't know what else is next, Mr. Chairman, but we're getting there. We're right there.
We've already confirmed the date for the next meeting.
October 3rd, 6:30. No, 6, 6 with CIP and then 6:30 for, right?
Yeah, 6 for capital improvement, 6:30 for all of us. Then the next thing on the agenda is for selectmen to vote on St. Anthony Betterman order.
Okay. So we voted on this previously, we never signed the Betterman order, so we're gonna, I'm gonna ask for a revote and a signature today. This, we sent this forward, may have, may have last year for the money, the authorization at town meeting for Rich to borrow, borrow the money for it. Work's been completed on St. Anthony's and it's rated, gained street acceptance. It's on this upcoming warrant, but we need to file a Betterman order with the registry of deeds. And then on the next one, we're gonna have the, have you vote the street layout. We've got all that stuff back from engineering, so I'm asking for a vote, a vote, and I'm gonna send this down to Janet, and she can hopefully just move. Lucid, are you on at this point? Vote to approve the Better, the Betterman order for St. Anthony Road. That's all we need for motion, and then a signature.
All right. You don't immediately need this into-
No. Can I make a motion to file a Betterman order for St. Anthony? Yep.
Second. Any further discussion? Questions, concerns? There are none all in favor of state, aye?
Aye.
Unanimous.
What else we got?
Adjournment. That's it. No. Motion by Mr. Johnson, second by Mrs. DeShane's. Anybody that doesn't want to, speak now, forever hold your peace. Unanimous adjournment.